170,000 square feet of Bermuda sod and fertilization of fields. The entire family is invited to a special Juneteenth edition of Music in the Park, featuring Roland and the Roots Rhythm on June 14th, 7:30 to 9:30 p.m. at Flugerville Park. There's no admission charge, so bring lawn chairs, furry friends, blankets, picnic baskets, friends and neighbors for a free evening of music, entertainment and...
Money speaks.
There we go.
Why is it great that UT keeps changing coaches?
David Pierce was there for eight years!
Isn't there some statistic about that UT has like the largest endowment fund?
Yeah, larger than Harvard.
Is it larger than Harvard now?
Because we got that oil and gas money.
And Harvard, of course, has disinvested from all that.
Oh no, they just don't have as much weight as they did then.
They're not staying.
Sorry, got carried away over here. I'd like to call to order the City of Flugerville City Council work session to order at 6:01, June 25th, 2024. Both items are an executive session. Two A executive session item consultation with legal counsel regarding legal issues associated with the central wastewater treatment plant expansion phase one project pursuant to chapter 5.1.071 of the Texas government code and discussion regarding sales, tax, elections and special districts. We are in executive session.
Oh, you got it.
I need, I need like fourteen of those. I know, no, I, well, I mean, I'll pay for them too.
I'm still going with eight thirty.
Of the, uh, not, I mean, if I could get.
You are optimistic.
Going on an Alaskan cruise and I want everyone to.
We're back from executive session, no action was taken, uh, work session is adjourned. And, uh, we will open up the, uh, regular Flugerville City Council meeting at seven P M. If you will stand with me to, uh, for the pledge and in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. With, uh, great sadness, the city of Flugerville mourns the loss of Araduke, who lost her life attending a Juneteenth celebration on June fifteenth in Round Rock. Arrow was a respected and beloved m- member of our community and her loss will be deeply felt for a long time. No words can ease the pain of a life taken too soon. We also mourn the loss of Lindsay Vicner from Maynor, who died in the same incident. We extend our thoughts to the fourteen others who were wounded. In honor of Araduke's friendship, impact and memory, please join me in a moment of silence. You may be seated. Our next item is public comment, um, we have no public comment, okay? Well, let me retract that, uh, is there anyone here wishing to make public comment? Okay, let me read this, in accordance with the Texas Attorney General's opinion, any public comment that is made on an item that is not on the published and final agenda will only be heard by the city council, no formal action, discussion, deliberation or comment will be made by the city council, each person providing public comment will be limited to three minutes. If you will identify yourself.
Yes, sir, is this the right spot?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, my name is Chris Wolf, I'm a resident, uh, here in Flugerville.
Yes, sir.
All right, so, uh, I do want to start off by, uh, thanking all of you, it's seven P M. You probably worked today and now you're over here taking care of all of this important business, uh, not getting paid and that's pretty special. Uh, I'm, I'm a normal guy, I like to go to work, go home, hang out with my family, uh, so I can really appreciate, uh, the sacrifice that you guys make. Um, I, I'm, I vote and then I expect my leaders to lead. I know a little bit about leadership, being a lieutenant in the Flugerville Fire Department and a paramedic. I know the most important thing is to take care of our people. Um, I took an oath, I took an oath to take care of all the people here in Flugerville and each person at this table and I don't know if you guys took an oath as well, um, but that's, that's important. Uh, I want to thank, uh, Mayor Gonzalez and, uh, uh, Councilman Ruiz for your leadership, your passion at the last meeting when you guys stood up for public safety, that really meant a lot and that's exactly what we expect our leaders to do. Uh, I do want to disa- uh, express my disappointment that we chose a for-profit EMS model. It's, it's not the best and we deserve better, to be honest. Uh, and those decisions cost lives and not just the ones that you read about in the newspapers where things go really bad. Uh, I know that there's many other cases, uh, because I was at one of them, where a lady called nine one one, uh, near, very near where I live, said that she couldn't breathe. Uh, we get dispatched out there, so does an ambulance, they beat us there, they come on the radio and say, hey, guys, we're good, we got this. And that happens pretty regularly, all right, cool, not, not a big deal, not dying after all. We go back to the station, about ten minutes later, we get called right back out from that unit. Hey, now we, our patient's in cardiac arrest, we need you guys. And unfortunately, it was about nine and a half minutes too late, because you just can't go that long without oxygen. We got there and, uh, there was nothing that we could do and she passed away. And, uh, I'm, I know I'm gonna think about that call for the rest of my life, no doubt about it. And, uh, I can only imagine what her kids and her grandkids think about it. Um, I wrote a report, I sent it up, you know, did you read it? I hope that you did. That's the state of EMS in the city of Flugerville. Uh, now I understand there's an effort to defund the fire department. Uh, the safety net that's really been catching a lot of these, uh, problems with our EMS, uh, now we're gonna s- cut its budget. You, I just want to remind you guys that this is not about politics, uh, I'm not a politician by far, this is just, this is a people job, uh, and we expect you guys to watch out for people. People like me that elect y'all are expecting you to take care of our families, our kids, please don't violate that trust, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Anybody else here wishing to make a public comment? Uh, item number four, for a conducted presentation on the communications department. Philip Romero, you're up, I love your time.
A good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Madam City Manager. On May sixth, we celebrated a milestone with a fully staffed communications and marketing department, um, that stand right behind me. We emphasize the recruitment of talented professionals and the focus on building strong relationships that lead to results. People first, projects second. If you focus on relationships, the results of your success will come right after. Our team is running on all cylinders, like the great sports dynasties aiming to build communications and marketing powerhouse similar to the Bulls of the nineties, the Yankees, the Patriots and yes, the, the Texas Rangers from last year's season. I want to introduce, formally introduce to you our communications team that stands behind me, Roger Haney, our assistant director, the creative guru behind all the Star Wars videos and, uh, That's My Flugerville and all the exciting content that you see on P F T V and our social media. Ms. Jessica Taylor, our public information officer and award-winning multimedia, multi-media journalist that we brought on the team. Ms. Brittany Moreno, our communication specialist, experienced in project management in the city, county and state levels. Ms. Angelique Romique Duran, a communication specialist, also Flugerville, Flugovillian, former White House intern and social media expert. Carla Grismala, tourism and marketing coordinator, marketing with a marketing background and teaching experience, who's a former Georgetown I S T Teacher of the Year. Ms. Sarah Khan, Hook 'em Horns, U T McCombs, uh, uh, currently attending the U T, um, McCombs School of Business as an intern. Uh, Tim Maloney, web divi- on the web division side, he's, who's a high, has handled high-profile clients for the past thirty years. And the foundation of our, our team, Wade and Nathan of Flugerville T V, who's out there, um, getting all the great content to share with the community. Together, we created five divisions, um, as a department that rely on communications, creative services, P F T V, web and now newly added tourism, uh, as we expand our, uh, horizons in terms of tourism and economic development. All that combined, to this date, we've com- completed two hundred and twenty-one projects. Over the past year, the communications and marketing department has achieved remarkable success. reflecting our commitment to excellence and the community engagement. Some key highlights, recently, we were awarded the T A, uh, the Texas Association of Municipal Information Officers Award for Excellence on the N E S C campaign, social media campaign. And also on an international side, Hermes Creative Award, two thousand twenty-four gold winner for the Explore Flugerville Tourism Rebrand. On top of that, we are, um, hoping we get, uh, awarded for the T M L in terms of all, all their awards that we submitted and the three C M A awards coming in September. So we're excited for the opportunities to add to our trophy case, which are seventy-three in total through the history of the communications department. Updates on the website for, from February, since we did a conversion in Google Analytics for G A four, from February twenty twenty-four to June twenty twenty-four, our, our websites have seen substantial growth and engagement. Six hundred and thirty-six thousand in average per year, the total views, uh, we're averaging about two point two million, reflecting a four point seven six percent increase from the previous year. We have a high engagement time, users spend an average of one minute and nine seconds on our site, surpassing the industry average of fifty-three seconds. We have high mobile users, around a hundred and thirty-one thousand. And our users consistently report high satisfaction with the site's usability, as evidenced by five point seven million triggered events, indicating an ease of navigation and content discovery. On the print communication side, the year review and the flyer have been successfully mailed to thirty-seven, uh, thirty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-six households, marking a thirty-nine percent increase. We have expanded our reach by including several apartment conflicts, conflicts across the city. And on the print advertising side, with community impact, has been highly effective, with sixty-eight percent of the residents getting their information through the medium based on a resident survey data from twenty twenty-three. Other communication tools that we use, the P F T V website that has two hundred, uh, or two thousand eight hundred and forty total stream views. The Key to the City newsletter has grown to two, twenty thousand four hundred and ninety-six subscribers, a hun, one, one hundred and fifty-five percent increase since November twenty twenty-three, adding twelve thousand five hundred and twenty-eight new residents. Our P F Alert system has seen a hundred and sixty-seven, a percent increase, now reaching, now reaching two hundred and twenty-two, uh, thousand subscribers, with fourteen thousand three hundred and seventy-one new residents added. This is something that I like to highlight of the incredible team behind me, because we brought fresh perspectives and innovative ideas that are transforming the approach of how we engage our community. Our data-driven strategy, our data-driven strategy combined with creative, um, and engaging content, like you've seen the, uh, Virgin Ten posts and recently, um, the, the Game of Thrones, um, Facebook post that we did, are things that we're trying to be innovative with to engage our, our community and get them tied into the stuff, to the programs that we're promoting, um, through, uh, across our, our platforms. The increase in followers, we have experienced fifty percent increase in followers on our city page. This growth is well above the national average for municipal social media pages, which typically we see an annual growth rate of around ten to fifteen percent. On the engagement side, our post engagement has surged by forty-two percent. Nationally, government pages, uh, pages struggle to achieve high engagement rates, often hovering around point one to point five percent, according to the industry reports from sources like Good Suite, GovLoop and the Pew Research Center. Thanks to our strategic content and timely interactions, we have far exceeded this benchmark. That lead to website traffic, the number of clicks from our social media posts to our website has increased by twenty-six percent. This is a strong indicator of the effectiveness of our posts in driving traffic and engaging residents in meaningful ways. On the media relations side, we have a total of two, two thousand three hundred and thirty mentions, uh, that's received positive publicity, with fifty-three point three being positive. Uh, and on the radio side, sixty. When we compare our media relations performance to national averages, according to the Pew Research Center and the Public Relations Society of America, local government entities often struggle with maintaining that high percentage of positive media coverage. Achieving fifty-three point three percent, uh, mentions places us well above the typical average of twenty to thirty percent, uh, nationwide. And what's coming up, we're building on that success with the revamped, rebranded, uh, Flugerville website on October first. We have a public access channel rebrand with, uh, converting to P F Media, where we're striving to be more, uh, to create more engaging content across all of our platforms. The P F Insider program is similar to, uh, That's My Flugerville, where we're highly, highlighting, highlighting frontline work in the heart of the city. So, uh, you'll get to see Roger doing his, uh, his take on, uh, the city of Flugerville's frontline dirty jobs aspect of, of our approach. And also sharing and continuing to share the knowledge of the Be in the Know H two O, uh, which is, uh, important information that we relay out to the community so they can, um, understand and get informed on all the investment in our water infrastructure across the city. And with that said, I want to open up the floor for y'all's questions.
Well, I don't, I don't have a question, but I have a comment certainly. Uh, you know, Flip, this, this is awesome, it's really awesome in terms of, of how we're communicating with our community, uh, getting information out, making it available. Uh, in twenty, in two thousand and five, uh, government had to wait for the Flugerville flag to come out once a week. So, we weren't getting much information out back then. But I'm really excited about what you guys have done and your team especially, I guess, that's everybody over here on my left-hand side.
Yes, sir.
Okay, there we go. And, um, uh, I, I just feel like, uh, we have been moving in the right direction. And I guess one of my questions to you is that, have we advanced enough in terms of the, uh, the technology? Is there technology out there that we can still, uh, uh, access or incorporate into what we're doing?
It's a moving target, Mayor, yeah, we're constantly thriving to be innovative as we can. What we're doing with, uh, P F T V actually converting into P F Media, we're actually gonna have an on-demand access on Roku. We're gonna have an app that you're able to download and get our programming on demand. So, if our wonderful residents want to get, uh, watch our, our city council meetings on demand, we can do that. We also, one of the things that we adapted, uh, when I came and started this position is switched to getting our videos, um, live streamed on YouTube. With the ease of access, you can, you know, watch the meeting here, you can go, um, to your house, you can watch it on your truck and then cast it to your house, so it's, it's a constant thing that works. Um, so we're, it's a moving target in terms of technology and we're trying to adapt and find and figure out ways to connect to and engage with the community.
What would you say is one of the segments, uh, of our community, and when I say segment, uh, population, if you will, uh, that we may be missing, I mean, I know we have a, a large senior community and I'm not sure how they're accessing information. I'm, I'm sure even my, my ninety-five-year-old mother is on Facebook and, you know, social media, so I know they have the ability to do that. But are there other segments that we, we need to focus on?
I think we're, we're, we're with the five divisions, we're, we're capturing a wide net. Uh, because we're also focusing on print media, we haven't dropped that, we know it's important for our, our stakeholders to have something tangible in front of them that they can read and find out what the city is doing. We promote on Facebook and social media, we're expanding on Instagram, because we know that's a different audience, it's a younger audience.
Right.
They like to watch vertical videos and we're adapting to that. So, it's a constant thing of trying different approaches to engage the community. Um, with the P F Stream, what we're, we're, uh, trying to accomplish is even create more engaging content. So we create, for example, podcasts, something that you can listen on demand. Uh, now, nowadays, it's, we have the attention span of a nap, right? If I, if I can inform you, if I can get, can't get the message to you in less than twenty seconds, I've already lost you. So how do I connect with you?
Right.
And that's by creating multimedia content that connects with you. I know recently, we tried something with, uh, our, our police department, we're doing something that's trending with, uh, our, our safety, summer safety series and we're seeing the numbers through the roof.
Right. Counsel.
I have some questions about the social media, I noticed that the multiples of engagements versus followers are dramatically different from different platforms. I noticed particularly, uh, LinkedIn has astronomical engagements as a multiple of, uh, of followers. Do you know, uh, what is driving that? Is there anything that is, uh, we're doing that is particularly successful in one platform that we can transfer over? Or are these things that are innate to those different platforms?
It, it's, every platform is different, every platform, you have to use different content. And thank you for mentioning that, because we're actually number one, we're ranked number one, uh, according to in terms of engagement on LinkedIn. Um, second to San Antonio and I believe Austin, Austin, the city of Austin. So, it's just creating different, different types of platforms to engage the community, every platform is different. Facebook is a different audience, Instagram is a different audience.
Right.
Um, so we're, we're, it's a moving target.
Very different audiences. And use, and, and utilizations too.
Okay.
So I just, I just want to take a moment, Flip, to thank you and your team, uh, for the, uh, the levity that you've provided. And I think, uh, it speaks volumes when we see some of these exciting and these fun ways that we're engaging with our, our community. Uh, it, it makes people, uh, I think, happy and excited to be part of Flugerville and excited to see the, the fun that we're able to have. So I really want to thank you and your team for, uh, stepping up and having a little fun with it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, it's, it's really, um, it, it's a team approach and also, uh, our leadership giving us the opportunity to be innovative, right? Um, I think, um, uh, to this, to this time, to this day, we've never had an idea of kind of shut down. It's always a proactive approach, well, let's do it. Um, and it's, it's our leadership as well that make, make, gives us the opportunity. We saw it with State of the City, um, that was another way, um, that we missed, right? Events is another opportunity for us, when we have people there, how do we, how do we get them hooked and to keep wanting more and to learn more about that? We saw, we saw a lot of, of different stakeholders that wanted to participate and kind of be a part of the engagement from the state of the city. So, it's constantly growing.
Very good, that was good, all right, thank you very much, Flip, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council.
Your wishes. Go ahead.
Uh, with nothing told, the consent agenda may be acted upon in a single motion.
So moved. Second, motion, the second to approve the consent agenda.
These three-fourths of our audience is gone.
Yeah, uh, Brittany?
I had something for you.
There we go, thank you. All right, motion carried. All right, moving on to, um, public hearings and ordinances. Uh, six A, conduct a, the first public hearing, uh, regarding the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-eight Community Development Block Grant, uh, Program Consolidated Plan and Action Plan. Jeremy?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, so this is the first public hearing for our consolidated plan. The consolidated plan is a community development block grant, essentially, it's our application to, um, be able to participate in that process. Um, this is for a five-year term, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight. Um, we have a consultant that is with us tonight that will be able to walk through the consolidated plan where we are right now. This is, uh, the first public hearing, um, related to this and so, um, this is an opportunity for the public as well as for council to be able to provide your feedback as well on the consolidated plan. Um, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Erica Phambro with W F N Consulting and she will walk through the presentation.
Thank you, Jeremy. Um, good evening, good to see you all again. Um, so we have, uh, as we promised before, prepared a plan, uh, come up with some recommendations for priorities and goals and things like that, so we'll get into the presentation. Um, so the two documents that we worked on, um, one is called the consolidated plan, the other one is the action plan. So that consolidated plan, just to kind of give you just a brief overview, um, so that we can move into recommendations and things like that. So that consolidated plan is essentially a five-year strategic plan, um, that the city will use to, uh, access their HUD grant funds. Um, the annual action plan is a document that's completed every single year. And so that action plan really, uh, gives teeth to that strategic plan. So that's what the city's planning to do, um, each year to meet those priorities and goals. And so we'll talk about those a little later, uh, in the presentation, what those actual specific goals, um, are. So we'll go over this process, um, just briefly here. Um, we've kind of done steps one through four, um, we're somewhere between four and five now, so we've determined needs, we've set some priorities, um, we've looked at what resources the city has to meet some of those priorities and then we've, uh, come up with some recommendations for goals, um, and that's where we are here today. So, what we're doing today is presenting this to you all, presenting it to the public, to get some public feedback, comments about those, um, recommendations. And then, uh, the next step in that process is for council to approve that plan, for us to get it submitted up to HUD and then the city can start administering the program. So that's really step five and six. So for step five and six, I'll turn it back to, um, Jeremy and the team and they'll get going on that. And then, next year, around this time, they'll have to do a report, um, that's sent back to HUD, um, to let them know how you use the money. So that's really kind of the overview of the planning cycle with these grant funds. Um, so, um, back in March, when we came out and presented before council and, uh, at a work session, uh, March twenty-second, we opened the needs assessment survey. So, um, the survey received about three hundred and forty-six responses, which is really good, um, for, for a town this size. I've worked in communities with far larger populations that only got five hundred surveys. So, um, that's really good, really good engagement, I'm sure it has something to do with, um, the communications team that just, um, presented, that we got such a good, uh, response from that. Um, so that was open for about sixty days roughly, uh, we closed that on May twentieth. Um, we did get by far the bulk of the responses, um, during that first couple of weeks, um, that the, uh, survey was open. Um, and I should mention, during that time, in addition to those surveys, we also, um, came out and done, did some public meetings, um, with, uh, residents here in the community.
So, in those town forums that you did, or the, the public meetings, did they reflect what you saw in the actual survey results that were given online or were you finding any line of delineations or differences between the two?
Yeah, they're pretty jammed up, so, um, the, the, what we got from our meetings and what we heard, um, in the surveys were quite similar, the only difference is, um, in the meetings, we did get a good bit of information about, um, food deserts and things like that, um, in the community. And, and honestly, we did have a couple of organizations that represent that population, um, so they were quite vocal about that particular, um, need. Um, when we look at the survey, um, we kind of divvy it up amongst, um, various categories. So we, we said, um, we wanted people to rank the most, um, important public facility and infrastructure needs. And that by far was street and road improvements and then, uh, sidewalk improvements. So those are, um, quite, um, quite popular amongst, um, people wanting to see those types of projects.
Could we go back a second?
Sure, sure.
You said something that I have, uh, I don't think, in the twenty years I've lived in Flugerville, I don't think I've ever heard anybody, uh, use that term about Flugerville. Hear it all the time in discussions about other cities, food deserts. So, uh, what is the, uh, area of town that, uh, that you heard described like that?
Um, well, this was in the meetings and they were really talking about people who are not able to access food. And I guess maybe that's some misnomer, in a food desert and people who aren't able to access or afford food.
Okay, so you were talking about individuals, uh,
Yeah.
trouble affording food, not that there are areas of the city that don't, don't have. Trouble affording food, not that there are areas of the city that don't, don't have.
But did you hear what she said? She said access.
Grocery stores or things like that.
So it's, it's both. So there are people who can't afford it and then people who can't access it. So they may not have transportation. Um, they may not be able to get to a store. It's not in a walkable distance from their homes and things like that. And I could provide more, uh, in-depth detail, um, if that's what you're looking for.
I, I am. And I, I'm curious, these people who said that they couldn't access it for non-monetary reasons, are those people familiar with the city fetch a ride program?
Um, that I can't say for sure because we weren't talking to the actual person that's not able to access it. We're speaking with organizations who kind of assist and provide, you know, food pantry options and things like that.
Right. I'm, I'm familiar with some of those, those organizations. Cause that, that seems to me, we should be able to get people to a grocery store because the fetch a ride program operates seven days a week, 24 hours a day.
Right.
Uh, and it covers the entire city.
Right.
So no matter where you are in the city, it should be able to take you to a grocery store of your choice. Um, so I, I'm concerned about that.
Yeah. And we do have, we did have a question, um, in the survey. We'll get to it in, I think about two or three slides, specifically about fetch a ride.
Okay.
So, um, well, let's get to that and then we can have more discussion. Um, in terms of, um, activities that residents thought that the city could undertake, um, in that public facility, infrastructure categories, um, by far improving roads, fixing and repairing sidewalks. And these are just, um,
So this is your word cloud and the only thing I, the only thing that raised my eyebrow was, is it, uh, water enough centers? Enough centers? Drive enough? Enough walk? What, what is enough came up in your word cloud in what context? Do you see enough?
Enough centers?
Is that, is that what it was? So it's, it's enough centers?
Well, enough is a word that's used. So this is a free form. So this is now where you select. This is, you can free form, say whatever it is that you would like to say. So if you're having to use those support words, it's, it, it will show up.
Okay. So yeah, my apologies. So in your word cloud, just like you said, it comes up with those specific words that come over and over again. Singually enough came up to enough, eh, eh, enough, ha ha, pun intended, to be included in your word cloud. Is that what you're saying? Not as in enough centers or enough walk. It's just the word enough.
Just the word enough.
Correct.
This is a pretty atypical word cloud. It looks like you had two people respond and two said improve roads and one person said, I mean, what was your audience on this?
I could give you the breakdown. It does, I do have that information.
You see some variability, right?
I do have that information. It's not listed here because it would be a little bit too small for you to see. Um, but it is broken down to where you can see how many people said improve roads, how many actual people said traffic control, how many people said infrastructure and those sorts of things.
I would be curious if you could send that to me, please.
Go even further to say, um, like the word enough. I can drill down to say, what was it being said? Were people saying there are not enough this or there's enough of that? We can drill down into what the actual, um, raw data shows on what these actual words, um, represent. So we can do that.
That would, that would be very helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me just make a note here. All right. To the next one. Um, another question we asked, because CDBG can be used for housing-related, um, activities. So we asked, how satisfied are you with your current living situation? And most people said that they were very satisfied or somewhat satisfied.
So that was the question asked. Okay. So because you, just like you said, you said housing. So living situation has me think of a variety of different things that entails living situation.
Well, there, most people are satisfied with where they are living, so.
Not how they're living, but where they're living.
Yeah, that's exactly like I was, again, yeah, exactly.
All right. And then, so we asked them if they're not satisfied with their current living situation. What is the, uh, reason for dissatisfaction? Um, a lot of people said they, places were too expensive. Um, the other one was, um, public transportation. And, uh, we do understand, um, that limitation and the fetch a ride program is something that's, um, helping to alleviate some of that public transportation, um, that the city may be lacking. So we talk about that in the next slide, I believe.
Could you help me, help me understand? What's the, what's the range this, uh, zero to 100 on the, on the side of the grid?
Um, the number of people that, um, answered in this way.
But in the last question, only 25 people said that they were not satisfied with their current living situation. So we've got a lot more people answering this question than fall into the category.
How does that correlate?
I, if I'm, if I'm understanding, yeah, we've got a hundred who are very satisfied and a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and ten who are somewhat satisfied and then, you know, hopefully.
She just gave the answer. Okay. So you're saying that even if somebody said they were satisfied, this was the,
You still asked them this question?
Yeah, this question?
Uh, no, they don't get this question.
Okay.
Then the numbers don't add up.
So then the numbers don't add up.
Yeah. So if you're somewhat satisfied, not very satisfied or not satisfied.
So even the somewhats?
Some, so somewhat, so you're somewhat.
Okay.
Okay.
Right.
And they selected all that applied?
Yeah.
Then it would be in all the categories.
Okay. So then you're,
So more than half those people said it was too expensive.
Right. And so, and what's important to keep in mind is that it's not a, a one for one. So we're not looking for, there are 40 people that are, um, dissatisfied. We're just trying to get a general consensus of what, um, people are facing here in the community. And that gives you somewhat of an idea of where you need to focus and kind of drill down.
So if you're not very satisfied, you could pick five answers.
You could.
Correct. You're, you're somewhat satisfied, but you, there are five things that you don't like.
Right.
Okay.
Now you have other and then other please specify.
So in this one, they were able to write in, you know, something that's not listed here. Or they could choose not to. All right. So we asked about economic development opportunities, um, for lower and moderate income persons. So, um, what came up the most was people thought that the city could not accommodate industrial traffic, um, and inadequate transportation connections. So that's like people not being able to connect to, um, larger metropolitan, um, transit. So having access to get to, um, Austin was most often noted when I kind of drilled down into the, um, the survey results.
Which goes back to Councilman Rogers' idea about fetch a ride.
Yeah. Exactly.
I think a lot of that probably also goes into, you know, it's, it's hard to get on 35. There's no direct connect from, into Austin from 45. You gotta go down Wells Branch and get through the traffic lights. If, if that's the inadequate connections that we're talking about.
Well,
I think some of that's infrastructure.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, the gray line is, is interesting to me. Roads cannot accommodate industrial traffic is a, I mean, that, that's by far the biggest response there.
Yeah.
That would be Amazon driving down Pecan. Is that, is that, people are not happy about the Amazon trucks going down a manual? I mean, I don't know.
Did you hear what he's saying?
Because we do have two very large toll roads that go right through town that certainly can accommodate industrial traffic.
Are those industri- is that industrial traffic going through individual neighborhoods, things like that?
No.
I don't know. I, I'm, that's why I'm so curious about that answer. Because we have, we have a north-south toll road and an east-west toll road.
Okay.
I mean, just a little bit of anecdotal, um,
Sure.
evidences is, uh, I happen to, to be around the corner of, of, uh, Pecan Street and Railroad. And, and still see the, the 40-foot Amazon Prime trucks make that right-hand turn to go north on Railroad. And I believe just yesterday, again, uh, the, uh, traffic signal folks were out there repairing it because the van will push up against the pole and scrape off the, the, the box. And so, and so if you, if you think in terms of that as our major downtown intersection, perhaps that's the intersection that people are referring to. Can't accommodate, uh, commercial traffic.
Okay. Because Pecan is so narrow through the center of town.
And that's a main arterial, right?
Okay.
Um, and so, uh, and if you, like, I think, uh, Rudy or the mayor said, um, uh, looking at connectivity to I-35, right? Uh, historically went down Pecan and went through that beautiful intersection at Wells Branch. Now you can go down Wells Branch and kind of get there. But the, the connection just to the north there is convoluted and, and weird and hard to get to. And so the east-west arterials that would take you to, uh, I-35 are, are difficult.
Okay.
To the newer infrastructure to the, to the east, you're right.
Yeah.
Getting on the toll roads, going north to the toll road or east of the toll road, uh, a lot of beautiful intersections, a lot of great connectivity there.
But if you live in old town, less so?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's my take on it.
That, that, that makes sense.
Um, let's see here. Um, and this is what, what I was talking about with fetch a ride. So, um, how does availability of transportation options affect your daily commute? Um, so, um, some people said that fetch a ride was adequate. Um, it's working for them. Um, others, they're saying that it doesn't provide services to their jobs. So maybe they are working a little further out in the community. They're working maybe in Austin or something of that nature.
Yeah.
Um, I guess in this third option here, can't afford rideshare opportunities. Maybe they have used all of their fetch a ride vouchers, um, for the month or whatever. Um, and some people said that rideshare was inadequate, that it just doesn't work for them. And I could assume that maybe they were, um, not able to access the internet. Maybe they're not able to have that on their phone, things like that. Maybe they don't know how to use the technology.
No, I, I, I did actually have an interaction with a citizen, uh, last week who had a flip phone.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and, and didn't have a computer.
Mm-hmm.
And, and wanted to know how to get a hold of fetch a ride. And you can actually make a phone call.
Is there a phone number to call?
Uh, but that's, uh, that was something that was not obvious and, and, and frankly, I, I didn't have that immediate answer to it. I had to reach out to our super knowledgeable staff, which got back to me like that, uh, and then helped the citizen with that. So, uh, I can see if they, you know, you don't have a, a, you don't have a smartphone and you don't like computers.
Right.
Then, you know, it, it becomes much harder to use the Uber app.
Yeah. So those are good options, by the way, the fetch a ride program. I, I think it's a wonderful, um, way to alleviate that, um, lack of, you know, the public transportation option.
It does perhaps provide for, um, fodder for future, a future meeting where, I know in the past, we looked at some of the statistics. Uh, and we offered 10 vouchers per month. Uh, I think we saw some statistics where if you were, and we saw average usage under 10. And then we saw statistics where if you had unlimited vouchers, uh, that number still was below 10. It went up, uh, but the number of people that use it, you know, 10 times a week to and from work.
Right.
Uh, versus the people that use it once or not, you know, I, there's some months I don't use it at all. So I would, I would skew that number. Um, so, so maybe that's something that we can talk about in the future. Additionally, if there's, we should, they, they provide a, a grid, a map of, of, uh, the rides. And so I wonder if, um, if that map or that grid, that those data points might provide information about where people are getting dropped off just across the street from where they need to work.
Right.
Uh, and, and see, there's nothing there but an intersection and then they're walking across the store to work at whatever job they have.
Right.
Um, and, and maybe we, I mean, it's geofenced. So maybe we open up that up and, and pick up some of the, uh, job centers immediately adjacent to the city, uh, and look for including those within the fetch a ride program and seeing how that impacts the program.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause I, I was about to say, Serena, we, we don't hit our, do we hit our con, our, our cap? Are we any close? Do we know where we are in our cap and what we, our allotment?
Last prediction was it was going to be close. It was going to hit it.
I don't want to say if we've, um, do you mean every month? Cause it's different by month. So on average, I would say we're not going over. Um, but, uh, we know that some individuals need those rides more frequently than others. So in the aggregate, it may be fine, but for that individual that may work at, uh, a location that needs transportation, they need it more than 10 times a month.
Yeah. And I think that's, uh, that's a conversation, one about the allotment, two, I mean, but, uh, but two, realistically speaking, we also need to look at the finances to go behind it because we know that we're, you know, we're going to be making tough decisions this time around. So, you know, I, I would love the, I would like more transit options, but how much are the citizens willing to actually go ahead and invest into that? And have a realistic conversation about what transit needs take for it. I mean, I, it's, I, that's why I'm glad you're putting that committee together because I'm fascinated to see what these folks come back with.
And, and in those past conversations, that's, that's what kind of led us to fetch a ride. Cause of the geographic dispersity of the endpoints was not conducive to having regular routes.
Right.
Because then you, then you still have a transportation desert because you gotta walk a mile to get to the bus stop. Uh, and, and that's how we ended up with the current program.
Seeing that three mile radius wasn't big.
Which also was very less expensive. And I use very in there because it, I don't have the, I don't know what the opposite of de minimis is. Uh, what's the opposite of de minimis?
Very.
Impactful. Very. I need, I need more lawyer words. But, but yeah, when we looked, when we looked at other options, they were in the millions of dollars. Uh, even though we were getting federal share, uh, money, it still was, was egregious. Um, and so, uh, and so, uh, the, the rideshare program is, is very, uh, fetch a ride is very, uh,
Cost effective.
Great cost, cost effective. I like that. Thank you. And so maybe putting a little extra money into that, opening up the boundaries, we'll see what happens.
You know, Kyle, we talked,
Future conversation.
We talked about it because Kyle, that's what they started opening up, they opened up to the airport and some other things. Year two, year three. And so what do we do? What are we looking for that?
Well, and they did one, they did, uh, you could get, uh, if you're a veteran, you can get two trips to the VA, right? And so there, there were different endpoints that the geofenced in.
And I think that's where we go. Because I know that somebody was really surprised. I don't even remember where the, I was having this kind, I was at a Flugerville recently and somebody was complaining about, yeah, they're trying to get a client somewhere, like a doctor was. And I said, no, actually that area is in our fetch a ride program. And they were very surprised to see that. So I know we've captured some of those areas. Like we, if I recall, we, we captured the new, um, regional clinic that's in Bytony's, um, Jamaican restaurant and some of these other areas. So.
That's good. I like the program. You know, I've, I've worked in a lot of cities, um, similar in this size and, um, a lot of them just say, well, we just don't have it. And so you guys really did do something about it.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a really good, um, as anything could always be fine tuned. Um, and it just takes that constant feedback. Um, the survey that we did is kind of surface. I, I would imagine your, uh, transportation department or whoever's running fetch a ride could do a more in-depth study to really kind of get those, um, those ins and outs. Who's really using the program? Who's needing more? Where are they needing to go? Those sorts of questions, um, answered. And I would encourage you to do that, but this is a really good program.
Thank you.
In, in my opinion.
I'm, I'm curious. I feel like maybe we strayed off topic. But could you help me understand? How could we use, uh, CDBG funds to supplement or, or to enhance the fetch a ride program?
Um, you could simply, uh, keep in mind, CDBG is for people who are low income.
Yeah.
So, um,
So we could specifically issue additional vouchers?
Absolutely.
To that population?
Yes.
And, and that's where,
Seniors would be another option.
And that's where, um, I, I mean, I said, I know I've said this years, whenever, gosh, I love Emily. We had a, a big conversation, probably about six or seven years ago. And I gotta give you all the credit in the world because you started to get really creative about what to use CDBG dollars outside of roads and infrastructure just so we can target and help and support these lower-income families, job skills, everything else with theirs as well. So that'd be interesting. But again, I'm going to reiterate to council, we have a lot of, we got some hard decisions coming up in the next month or so regarding what we can do with our finances. So maybe, maybe this might not be the year to, to do it. Let's see. I mean, it is what it is. I'm open to hearing, but.
How would we means, means test people for, for, uh, CDBG funds for fetch a ride vouchers?
They would, they would, they would, They would turn in, they would turn in the applicable information necessary to develop that they are at that level of the probability level, a percentage.
Okay.
So we require someone on the city side to kind of vet those, uh.
Same as scholarships for fun camp, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not, it's not me, and they've handled that. Just have to say you are, cool.
Yeah.
A little more than that.
Yeah, that's what the purpose of the CDBG funds is, is to help people who are.
Provide just a little bit of, um, detail and, um, they'll verify the income thresholds. And then for the year, you'd be eligible and they have to reapply for the, um, for subsequent years. Um, so you could do, you could do seniors, um, disabled populations, seniors, um, people who are low income.
Do we have a, a break, a breakdown of who these people are who find ride share inadequate or want more transportation?
I could do a cross tab for that.
That might be, that might be useful in terms of finding out who we need to help more.
This better not be all coming from the Rogers household.
But, but to your point Rudy, if, if we were able to leverage CDB funds, CDBG funds, uh, to, uh, to expand this program, then it wouldn't impact our, our bottom line.
I don't know what, I know we, we always have rooms in the idea, but.
Okay. Continuing. Spending a lot of the money on infrastructure development in the, in the older, poorer parts of.
I told you, I told you he didn't hear me. So, so don't get mad when he doesn't hear.
Moving forward.
Okay. Um, and so when we just kind of opened it up, gave people just, you know, you can answer.
Of course.
You know, they.
Did you tell them that we used to have a bus?
They offer the bus. Um, and I do recognize that this is kind of what people's thought process is about public transportation, things like that, um, is a bus. Um, I do also understand that buses are incredibly expensive. And, you know, if you had a bus, you may not, you may not like that either. Because now you, you know, you don't have that kind of on-demand service and things like that. But this is what people said. Um, and I think when I read through this, and I can cross tab this for you too, but when I read through the, you know, just kind of raw data, what people are really saying is they want to be able to connect to the larger areas, um, in the community. And, um, they, they feel like they weren't able to do that.
And the hard, the hard part, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Two-year? Is it two-year pilot?
Cause it was during COVID and we extended it.
Okay, yeah. Um, you know, pilot with, with the circular ride bus or actually, what, was it a Steven circular?
Cat Metro.
Yeah, okay. I can't remember if it was on demand or circular.
It was still on demand, sir.
It was still on demand, okay. On demand, on demand rapid, on demand rapid transit.
Okay.
We had that, we had that specifically for it. And to what, you know, Councilmember McDonald said is that we had to find out area where it can be effectuated on that. And it's hard because you, you understand, and it's, and it's not just the Flugerville thing. I mean, it's a south thing, it's in general regarding public transit. They, you want an expansion of that, but how do you do one in a realistic manner?
Right.
That's actually ultimately gonna benefit our citizens and for, and leveraging their tax dollars, being, you know, you know, fully responsible with that. And I think that Fetcher Ride does that.
Okay.
But ultimately, this is where they would like to go with it. The question again, though, I reiterate to people who want that, that's a great idea. How do you pay for it?
Exactly.
So one of the, the things that, uh, I think Councilman McDonald was a particularly strong advocate for was making sure that the Fetcher Ride, uh, program, uh, connected, uh, with, um, the, uh, the Austin Transit System. Uh, and it does, but I'm wondering, I'm looking at this word cloud and I'm, I'm thinking that maybe people who are using Fetcher Ride don't know that they can take it to a connection transit point.
That may be, that may be some communications.
Go from there to all of Austin Cat Metro.
So you mean Tech Ridge?
Yeah. I mean, the, the Tech Ridge connection is, I think, you know, a key part of, of, of why this can work for everybody. And if people are not understanding that, maybe, you know, that's a, a communication problem that we need to solve.
Communication opportunity.
Opportunity.
Sure, a communication opportunity we need to exploit.
That's a good communication.
Yeah. Because that's, uh, I'm, I'm looking at that and thinking, well, I want a bus. Okay, take the Fetcher Ride to where the bus is. And then you can go anywhere on the bus. Uh, but if you don't understand that you can do that.
Right.
You think Fetcher Ride only takes you inside the city of Flugerville. You know, that's just a misunderstanding of what the program is. And it's, it's designed to, to interoperate like that.
Yes.
I, I am super curious about the word airport on there. And I'm trying to understand, is that people who are trying to get down to A B I A?
Yeah.
Or, or is that related to the executive airport and going to work or?
No, it's the major airport. And I, I hear that over and over and they said I would use if I could take it to the airport.
To the airport.
I hear that often. And now I got street cred because it's in her wonderful word cloud.
Forty, fifty bucks.
I mean, right now, yeah, it's a, it's a forty or forty-five dollar ride to the airport. So if you could use Fetcher Ride, then you'd save 10 bucks.
Boy, but you've got, but okay, but I'm guessing you're not a coupon person.
Oh, very much so.
Well, you also say my person.
Two copies of the Sunday paper over here.
But if you're a coupon person, then you're calling some of that more often than not. You know, the, the substantial impact, it depends on the, on, on the actual product that you're getting. Like, I mean, and so even in this instance, what they're saying is that, yeah, you may get X amount over there, but it's still something that, it's still something to consider and work on that. Um, I don't think they're asking for us to subsidize this to a level where it's going to be like, hey, you get 50% off, because I mean.
Well, I think what we saw in, in Kyle was, uh, that, yeah, the, the ride at least to the VA was, is a forty-five dollar ride and it's, it's entirely covered by the program. I, I want to say they expanded to the airport and I don't know how much of that they cover.
So they expand, they expanded to the airport, but, um, actually let me ask that question to see. I'll do, I'll give you an answer right now.
Okay, why don't we move on?
All right, so the plan priorities, um, so these priorities are things that you all will work on over the next five years. So, um, pretty basic things here. Um, public facility and infrastructure improvement. Um, improved access to public services. So when we talk about public services, um, increasing the ride share component will fall under this category. Some workforce solutions will kind of fall under this category. Um, the, uh, summer, um, not summer, the youth program and senior recreation program, those all fall under this category. The caveat with public services is you can only use 15% of your grant for those sorts of activities. So you are limited, um, in that way. And that's always kind of the big, the big gift, uh, with, uh, CDBG is that you can use a vast majority of those dollars in that infrastructure facility improvement category. Um.
And you, you told us last time about how you could actually use it on homes and, um, specific homes and all those things.
Like housing rehab and things like that. You can use it for that. Um, affirmatively furthering fair housing, um, that's, that's one of the, the, uh, cornerstones of the CDBG program. Um, and then planning and administration. Um, and so planning and administration, you're capped at 20% of the grant for that purpose. I think you all use far less than that 20% threshold. And we'll get to that in a couple of slides. Um, so what we do is we set priorities and then we set actual particular goals. And so these are the goals that we have, uh, recommended. Um, improve, improving infrastructure, improving, um, facilities. Uh, improve access to recreation and enrichment services for youth and seniors. So that's your, um, your recreation program. Um, improving access to workforce training. Um, and then improving access to transportations, uh, transportation for seniors and low income. So what we were talking about just a moment ago with, uh, potentially, uh, increasing the number of vouchers for, um, those two populations. Um, and then program administration. And so we'll get into the actual, um, recommended grant amounts in just a moment. So the funding allocation for the city, um, CDBG is a formula grant. It's decided by HUD on how much the city will receive annually. Um, they are announced to entitlement communities. Um, the amounts are based on population, poverty and housing overcrowding. So they look at all of these various, um, things and then they come up with, uh, the amount that the city will be receiving. And so for 2024, the city's receiving $300,748, which is a little north of what you got last year.
What's the definition of housing overcrowding?
Uh, housing overcrowding is more than 1.5 persons per bedroom. So that's how they look at it.
Are they using current data for population or are they using the census?
Uh, the population, yes, it's, it's census data.
So it doesn't change, just stays stagnant year over year until the next census?
Well, they use the, the estimates.
Okay.
Yeah.
Who's, who's estimates?
Census estimates.
But it's ACS?
ACS.
Yeah, that's what, yeah. I know, I know. And the only, and if I recall Serena, the only way that we can effectuate those, those estimates is if we send in our own information to, um, contest or anything else from there as well, correct?
Yes, there may be more to that process, but yes.
I was gonna say objection to unresponsibility, yes. Okay.
All right, so these are the, um, what the, what the department has, uh, recommended for allocations for 2024. So continuation of the, um, I'm sorry, uh, phase one construction of the Parkway Drive project. So a little north of 270,000 for that. Um, recreation scholarships for youth and seniors, um, 10,000 there. Workforce solutions, um, that's 15,000 and then admin and planning about 5,000, um, for that, which is far less than that 20% threshold that you could be using. So you all are using more money, um, for actual projects, um, versus staff.
Right.
Okay, so next steps in this process, um, written comments will be received until 5:00 PM on, uh, Friday, July 12th. So, um, anyone in the public wishing to make a comment will have until that time to, uh, provide written comments. Um, there's, today's the first public hearing. There's a second public hearing on Ju- July 9th. So people will get an opportunity to, uh, make additional verbal comments. Um, staff will take this to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration on August 5th. And then staff will come back to, um, council on August 13th, um, for approval of the plan. Once approved, um, we'll get that submitted into the HUD system and we'll wait for HUD to, um, approve the plan. You can start using your money. I will bring Jeremy back up at this time.
Uh, two slides back, you had a $15,000, uh, al, uh.
Uh, this one?
I missed it, one slide. Uh, for workforce solutions, workforce solutions, is that just a generalized sort of bucket? Or you specifically are we giving that money to workforce solutions?
Goes specifically to them for that training opportunities that they, they have.
And, and they'll provide some sort of evidence of they're using that for training here inside the city limits?
And that, so historically, we've actually allocated a little bit more money to them than what this amount is. What we found in, in our conversations with them is that they're having, we're having difficulty of, of finding folks that can hit the qualifications for that, that training.
Right.
We, we have limitations where you have to be in the city, can't be in the ETJ. There's a household income, um, requirements and then how the money can actually be utilized. So that's where we reduce.
How many people can you train with 15,000?
I would say around five.
Okay.
Maybe five to seven is, is the potential.
And, and what's frustrating about that is that, uh, especially workforce solutions capital area, they do an excellent job with the training. It's trying, just you said, trying to get that other part of the audience, because they have to be in city. They have to go ahead and have a, you know, the specific threshold on it. And so a lot of the people they're capturing within our zip code oftentimes are folks who are in ETJ or in the surrounding areas with that. And, um, you know, it's, that's, that's tough. That's, that's an issue trying to work through that as well. I'm glad you guys are, are trying to do that. I know originally, many years ago, they used, we used to have classrooms here in Flugerville, where we actually worked, and workforce solutions was training up here. And it was actually utilized, but not only people in Flugerville, but around the surrounding area. Cause I think at that point, Flugerville had about 25,000, 30,000 people or so. Uh, that may be something to look forward to in the future with that, but I think that, you know. Do, do what you can now.
Yeah, we, we've proposed to not remove them. You know, we, we have had conversations with them trying to, so we have $22 that are still out there. We have $23 that are still out there. Now talking about $24, wanting to make sure that we're not allocating all of this funding into a location where it's not being used. We actually, uh, may be coming back to you for an amendment to one of the prior action plans so that we can look at some redistribution as well, but.
And that's why I'm, I, I wanted to come back here because I'm, I'm wondering if, if this is the, the point where based on the survey information that we saw, that we added a, a $10,000 line item here for Fetcher Ride for qualified folks and, and, and see if it gets used or not.
And, and so we, we did have some conversations about the idea of, of Fetcher Ride and needing to have that kind of conversation of how would we, how do we make sure that everybody would, that wants to utilize the services can? We are limited also on the amount of services or the amount of funding that can go in there. So those are, those are things that, but we can look at it and so we can take that feedback in this, in this time period, you know, to, to see if that's something that we can propose. We could also offer it as an alternative as well.
Right, awesome. You mentioned that we have leftover dollars from 22 and 23. How many dollars are we talking?
Yeah, we're working, we're working with workforce solutions right now on trying to identify where are we at in their gap. In 22, um, I want to say around half of the money had been spent, uh, maybe a little bit less than that. In $23, they're not, they have not spent that money yet.
I wonder, I, I wonder.
So maybe we could move all of that leftover money to Fetcher Ride. We can't reallocate after that?
We can reallocate funds, but there are some process pieces there that I have to be more.
But you can't reallocate them over program years.
And that's where I need to hit a stop for a minute and say, I'll look and do it.
Okay.
Good question.
Okay. Where to now?
So this is a public hearing and then also offer opportunities for any kind of additional feedback.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public wishing to make comments?
After this revenue and schedule.
Motion to close public hearing, second. A motion, second, close the public hearing.
Doug, what they do is instead of paying the $3.14, they pay 31.4% of the bill.
And.
Of course they do.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Our next item is to conduct a public hearing and consider approving the first reading of an ordinance with the caption reading, "An ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas, as amended by change in zoning designation of approximately 105.18 acre tract of land situated in the William Caldwell survey, abstract number 162, survey number 22, both in Travis County, Texas, from agricultural development reserve to single-family residential, single-family, uh, neighborhood services and parks. A facility to open space to be named as a 16544 Cameron Road rezoning, providing for repeal and conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing an effective date."
Mayor and councilors, so this is an item, um, you, you'll recall that we were having some conversations about annexation of this tract. It's 150 acres generally northwest of the intersection of, of Cameron and Cameron and, uh, Fox Grove Road. Um, it's outlined there in red. Um, the properties that are just northwest, east, west and south are all inside of the ETJ. Um, adjacent property to the north is inside of the city limits and, and is part of, um, the 1849 park. The annexation, uh, resolution again was recommended for approval. They were pursuing, this is something that's a little bit different, where we're pursuing the rezoning, um, in concert with the annexation request. Uh, we've gone through the result, or the annexation piece, now going through the zoning component. Um, if, if the zoning was to be approved, then on July 9th is when, uh, we would have both, both second readings. Um, the request is to rezone the property to the neighborhood services, single-family mixed-use, single-family residential and PF. That's what those acronyms are. I apologize that there's acronyms there. However, just want to make sure that you have those on there. The red is the neighborhood services, the orangish color is the single-family mixed-use. The yellow is the single-family residential and the PF is the parks and facilities.
I'm unfamiliar with, uh, NS, can you expand on that a little bit?
And I'll, I'll hit each one of these here in just one second. So just a quick overview again, where are the properties located in relation to city-owned property or property that's within the city? So the gray, the PF zoning district is our parks and facilities. Again, that's 1849 park, that the subject tract is within the ETJ. The comprehensive plan identifies this for traditional neighborhood, which, uh, allows for the opportunity for a mixture of housing. This is actually one of those tools to be able to look at a mix of housing opportunities, um, in this quadrant. And that's the type of zoning that's being proposed. Parks and open spaces also, um, identified. And that's the type of zoning that's being proposed. Parks and open spaces also um identified in there. There's the slide for neighborhood services. Uh, neighborhood services is proposed to be along um Cameron Road and and neighborhood services is one of our lighter commercial zoning districts. Um, it allows for neighborhood sensitive types of commercial um developments, which might be small strip centers, something like office, retail. Um, there are some limitations on on the size of um facilities to be able to go into there.
So what you're saying is that we're sprinkling out in the community economic nodes so everyone doesn't have to go to Stony.
Right, so this gets into that ten-minute neighborhood concept, right? Where this neighborhood could have the potential of having neighborhood services right there so that they wouldn't have to drive into their locations.
We were talking earlier about food deserts. This is the walkability component.
It's an opportunity.
Ensuring that people have access even without transportation.
Correct. Yep.
So I'm looking in the U D C um and it says that they're oh, I just missed it, freestanding? And so it so it's freestanding retail structures, that wouldn't be like a a strip mall or?
Yes, it'd be like horizontal, horizontal kind of commercial development, things that you might see. Um, a a corner store, a a C V S type of uh, not to name drop things, but that type of a a land use, retail, might might go in something like that.
Would this be uh dry cleaners, nail salons, banks?
Yes.
Sonic.
Liquor stores.
Office.
Neighborhood services.
It is a neighborhood service.
You know, liquor store, I don't know if that. We'll work on that. Single-family mixed-use is the area just to the north and that's the orangey color. There's forty acres of of single-family mixed-use that's proposed with this zoning case. Single-family mixed-use is one of those zoning districts that we crafted roughly in twenty fifteen and prior to that, it was called something different. Um, but the idea behind this was to be able to offer opportunities for infill types of development. Um, what we're seeing th- this particular district be utilized is when when people are master planning and they're looking to do a smaller lot size, they look to this particular district. This district also offers the opportunity, while twenty acres, like less than twenty acres was kind of that idea, um, it allows for the opportunity to go to forty acres when you do a mix of land uses. And that's what's being proposed in this instance.
Now, that that mix could be a mix of different types of residential, not necessarily residential and commercial or retail.
For for instance, it allows for a brew pub slash wine bar.
It could.
With an S U P application, but not a bar tavern.
But it could also be a single-family attached and single-family detached and that would count as multiple different
Mixed, yes.
Mixed uses to qualify.
Mixture of uses can fall in line with that. And the the conditions that are related to the non-residential and are also, you know, limited to making sure that those uses are located on collector-level streets so that you're not having a local street with the activity that goes to adjacent single-family. There's some caveats to that.
How much, how much, how much interest are we getting in that, Jeremy? Because obviously this is for for our purposes. If you want a viable city, you want variety of different um, you know, residential structures to place for that. Uh, not everyone's a big fan of smaller lot sizes, but not everyone can afford the bigger lot sizes. Uh, townhomes, single-family, I mean, I think I, I think on Fluger Farm are um multifamily with the um with the senior living in the back. And then with those things, I think that's actually turned, I I think that's turned out really well, to be honest with you. I've liked it. But yeah, how much, how much, how many folks are grabbing into that area and being intrigued? How much interest are you getting?
Under the S F M U zoning district, a lot. So a lot of people are interested in having a smaller lot option. Um, in other neighborhoods where we've used a mix of the single-family residential and S F M U. Um, Vine Creek is an example, which is on Seal and Milver. Um, they incorporated approximately twenty acres of that. It's smaller lots that are there. It just kind of blends in. That is what this this would offer an opportunity to look at a mixture of housing opportunities there or options there.
Well, I think council needs to keep in mind, I know we're talking about a number of options here and they all sound kind of exciting and different and certainly would make for a very well-rounded uh community. But, you know, we're not even to the plotting stage and I'm sure that this is going to change over time and I'm sure the developer or the applicant probably already has a vision of what's going to go there. So I know we're talking around a number of of uh types of businesses that can go in there, but
Yeah.
we won't know until we know.
That's correct. And so I would anticipate the single-family mixed-use zoning district to continue to have single-family detached types of structures. Condominium is listed as a permitted land use in our U D C today. That's something that we took out of the district uh the corridor zoning districts, but today in the regular straight U D C that is listed as a use, so that is one of those options that.
Whose pipeline, Eastman, is that?
Whose pipeline? I that I don't know. You all may.
The llama.
Maybe.
The gas pipeline.
Yeah, high-pressure gas line.
Hmm, is it Texas gas? Just kidding.
Stop.
No, there is a Texas gas company.
We know there is, you're right, you're right.
We can find out for you. Um, but that does run through this this particular development. That is one, one of the things that they had looked at when we had seen a a previous land plan was a green space corridor was anticipated within there.
And and I'm assuming it's an easement with an existing pipeline. It's not like future, they're going to dig it up and put one in there.
It's going to be an existing.
Jeremy, will the entrance and egress be specifically just off of Cameron or are we going to connect two roads in the back there?
So it would be off of, when when we get into subdivision process, the the road connections will be into Cameron and then road steps will need to be provided into adjacent tracks.
And there's a, and there's people who drive there regularly. Need a lot of them.
I'm just looking at the congestion until that gets connected in the back there.
Yeah, well, and to the east with the P F, P F zoning district, this would go out to the east towards Cameron Road. However, there's a lot of flow plane that's there and so a road connection is probably not anticipated to go into that section of Cameron.
That's a future Kelly Lane opportunity.
Yeah.
So future connection.
By the way, will take years to develop. I hope the developer and the applicant knows it.
So this this does create an opportunity for the mixture of housing, which is something that was identified inside of the comprehensive plan. And this is one of those situations where the the applicant has proposed to come into the city, they voluntarily petitioned for annexation and wanted to go through this zoning process at the same time. If something doesn't work out, it doesn't mean that they won't go and do a a development there, it just means it wouldn't be in the city limits. Um, Planning and Zoning Commission did consider this item. They went through a process of having some conversations. They didn't have a full quorum. They delayed their consideration until their following meeting. The final vote was a six to one on that one.
I think it's important what you said too as well, said um doesn't mean they won't develop, just won't be in the city.
That's correct. This is one of those areas that's on the eastern end of town and that is is likely a gateway into.
Yeah, I was about to say, but we know where the march is going.
Yep. So the the applicant is also here tonight. If you have specific questions for them, otherwise, um, staff did recommend approval and be happy to answer questions.
Did you ask the applicant if they're putting a C V S there?
Did not.
Did you ask him if they're familiar with chicken and pickle?
Chicken and pickle.
Oh, you know what?
Well, the applicant may come forward, but don't make any promises because we know how things change.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, Councilmembers. Tara Thomason with Meritage Homes. Um, we do not know exactly what's going to go in the commercial neighborhood services area.
Uh, and to that point, the uh S F M U, uh, is that intended to be entirely residential?
Yes, a mixed use of residential, but uh residential.
So a mixed use of residential, is that going to be apartments, uh, single-family attached, detached?
Um, it would not be apartments, but we could do some attached. It could be condo, it could be.
Wouldn't that be a property that's subdivided for uh purchase or or something that's used as a large? Uh, I think Meritage has some of the uh, um, you know, build-to-rent.
Exactly, that's that was my question.
Contemplated at this point as build-to-rent.
Oh, wait, okay, okay. See, you opened the door. You said contemplated at this point, but you your your initial impression though is for this and and let's, again, if you've been watching our meetings for the last year or so, our biggest concern is this, is that um when it comes to housing, we understand that Flugerville is not the an affordable, it's just not. It's not the affordable place it was previously. It's not where it's at right there. It's very relative when people use the term affordability. With that, you're having various people who are concerned about how they're going to build equity in in their actual home because that's how you build wealth, you know, date of death value is how you transfer it is is usually your homeownership or property. So if people are renting, then they're not going to be able to build up that equity and be able to pass on that wealth to, you know, future generations with this. So to what, you know, the mayor pro temp was saying specifically, we're always much more intrigued and interested in hearing, hey, how can people, how how are they going to build a, build their wealth, be able to own, have homeownership? What's the pathway to that? So when you said that it's not contemplated at this moment?
Not much.
I just, but I want, but you said at this moment, so i- if it, maybe that's a better question for you. If that changes, that doesn't have to be brought back to us, right?
No, and and just to be clear, they, the product type, whether it's for rent, for sale, it it wouldn't matter. They they would go through as long as the the unit sizes and the land use is permitted by right, um, then that would be, that would be. So if if it, the zoning allows for a single-family detached, we don't say it has to be for sale or for rent. Um, we don't, we don't make that qualifier.
So to Doug's point, you said it's not contemplated at this point. When would you be making a decision one way or the other as to what's actually being contemplated there?
And we're not underwriting it that way at all at this point in time. I mean, it hasn't even come up in a conversation to date. Um, but again, i- if this project doesn't work out for Meritage Homes, the next person could come along and and do uh for rent if they need it to.
But we're not talking about the next person.
No, we're talking about Meritage Homes now, so that's why I'm here. Um, I can also talk to, is this how you?
Go back or forward.
Here. Um, if you don't mind, uh, there's a slide here that I'd like to just talk about. So the single-family residential um in the back of the property is slated to be the larger lots. Um, with some larger lots back in, um, what are we, fifties?
So not seventy-five?
Fifty foot. And six and some sixties coming in.
It's 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 relative. Yeah.
And then the transition into smaller lots um leading up to the neighborhood services. So we're trying to, you know, build a nice uh progression of, you know, different homes to that people can choose from, so. That's what we try to do. We'll also have an amenity center, a private amenity center along with the trails that will connect through. Um, multiple pocket parks are in the plan, in the land plan at this point in time.
This is good. I see a dedication of the of a new fire station. That's that's good to see that. Have you thought about a dedication as well? I love how you pick up on what you're really trying to get us. Uh, about a library. I mean, we had a conversation years ago about we need, I mean, we have our library that we, when did we build it, twenty?
One was two thousand seven.
Seven, twenty-two thousand seven? Yeah, um, which is, yeah, yeah, exactly. And it's been a while ago. Um, what about any dedication specifically for spaces like that? Because realistically speaking, we're going to need um either a a an eastern wing, whatever you want to call it. I never even thought of saying that people live in the east side of town, but here we are. Um, you know, yeah, how did you come to about for the dedication for a fire station? Was that specifically asked of you or how did you come out with that?
Um, it's actually predates me coming onto the project. Uh, we were already going down that path with the fire, with EMS. Emergency Services District. So I'm not sure exactly where that particular use came up.
So could, is there a possibility to have something dedicated for public land?
I mean, we've got the amenity center site. Um, I'll turn to the land planner to say.
City, city-owned property be- be- because, well, I'm sorry, um, the puppet master's speaking through me. Go ahead.
I I I may be interested in not speci- making it specific to what kind of station. It could uh be public safety. It could be, I wonder if uh the wording could just be to.
I think it's land dedicated for public use.
Public use, that's what.
Because, because when you said amenity center, I'm like, that's really for the citizens, but something for the city in particular.
Saying right now, in our plan, in our land plan, we have a private amenity center that that is in our, in our land plan. Obviously, nothing set in stone at this point, so.
And I would like to clarify on that a little bit. Um, so the.
Say your name, please.
Uh, Aaron Goatwell, so landscape architect with HAP. Uh, nice to meet you all, Mayor, Council. Um, so the amenity center would be in the S F R area. Uh, the fire station is currently in the N S area, so that is zone two acres for the fire station. So they're in different areas of the plan.
So you're saying really what we're looking at for any sort of entity, a C V S or anything like that is eighteen point three, not twenty point three?
We've already got two acres dedicated.
Yes, correct.
So a- again, what are the possibility, or i- if it hasn't been contemplated, I'm asking now about having some land dedicated specifically for the the public use of the city.
So I I may point out, if you don't mind, that would be in a development agreement, not in this current decision today. So we do have time to work that in a development agreement, if you like.
That's something we can contemplate for sure.
Okay. I heard contemplated. I want to see the 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 actions that actually have it truly be contemplated.
And and as we go through that process, uh, I know there's, I I get confused on these concepts, uh, e- even as long as I've been doing this, but uh, there's a concept of dedicating land to to the public and dedicating land to the city. Want to make sure that we're, you know, eh, to to Rudy's point, dedicating the land to the city so that we can either use it as a fire station or use it as a a library or something along those lines.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Uh, my only question is why do we call it future Cameron Road? Doesn't Cameron Road already exist there?
It does.
This, this is the new and improved.
Do. Or Cameron Road Duvo.
I I guess so.
Did you say, did you say Cameron Road or Duvo?
I mean, is is that an expanded? Is that six lanes instead of?
Eventually, it's going to be widened. It's it's part of the Travis County Bond project, I believe, that was, that was approved.
No, it was contemplated, yeah.
It would be expanded.
So does this, does this include dedication right away?
They'll need to go through that dedication when it, when it comes time for doing.
Doug's going to eat into that twenty acres again.
It may go that way or it may go south. I don't know.
Who do we, who owns the land south?
Not the city.
Austin E T J.
Yeah, that's, it's a.
My classmates.
Yeah.
Yeah, then we know where it's going. Just break down, okay, we already said it's eighteen point three, break that down to like sixteen.
Yeah, because you got a stripe right along there. Okay, any other questions, Council? Holding up progress here. Let's get on with the program. Eight thirty? All right. Is there anybody from the public wishing to make public comment on this project? Move to close the public hearing. Second. Motion, second to close public hearing. Okay, motion carried. I need a motion to approve.
Motion approve.
Second.
There we go.
Motion and second to approve. Okay. Well, hold on. Motion carried.
The march east continues.
All right, thank you, Jeremy. I guess you have the next one as well, probably, right?
No.
Okay, six C, conduct public hearing and consider it, well, no, that's not you. Uh, approving an ordinance on the first reading with caption reading ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas, amending and updating chapter fifty-three water and sewers drought contingency plan, providing that violations of this ordinance are class C misdemeanor, subject to fines not to exceed two thousand dollars. Providing cumulative repealer and severability clauses, providing for open meeting and establishing an effective date. Brandon.
I realize that was a mouthful. Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. This is uh, this is an update to our drought contingency plan. Uh, if you recall, last year we updated this previously to comply with uh our wholesale contract with the lower Colorado River Authority. Uh, this is an update after they updated their uh water conservation plan recently. Um, so just a a quick recap, I know we've all talked about water for a for a while, uh, but just a quick recap. Uh, roughly about eighty-five percent of our water supply is supplied through the Highland Lakes. So the Highland Lakes are Lake Travis and Lake, Lake Buchanan. Uh, so we are a member of the Highland Lakes Firm Water Customer Coalition, which includes the city of. the city of Flugerville, city of Cedar Park, city of Leander, all, all of the, all of the water firm water customers outside of the city of Austin, uh, were a collective that kind of couldn't get it.
Brandon, can you orient our, our constituents for where the Highland Lakes are located?
So Highland Lakes are within Travis County, uh, they're in region K of LCR, uh, so, uh, so those are Lake Travis and Lake Buchanan that are all almost entirely within the Austin area. So, uh, so we, we pump water out of the Colorado River all the way to Lake Flugerville, so there's a, but we are on the outer edge of the region K basin.
Cause I think that some people think that, um, when the recharge happens, it affects us and they don't understand where our water is actually coming from for our city.
Correct, so the recharge zone, which you're, you're referring to the Edwards Aquifer recharge zone, which is what San Antonio Water System and the folks down there usually, their primary water supply, we're just outside of that recharge zone, so we have two wells that are out, right outside of that recharge zones, which is great for us, uh, however, we don't, aren't impacted by the Edwards Aquifer recharge zone the same way that Sausas. Uh, so the Lower Colorado River Authority recently updated their drought contingency plan, their water conservation plan, it did make the news, if y'all saw that, probably about two, two and a half months ago, uh, there was some concern about whether or not the, we filled out our curtailment form, we thought that they were under the, they were concerned that all region K water users, including the city of Flugerville, were gonna have to go through a water rationing process if the Highland Lakes went lower, and they wanted to make sure that they were prepared for that if it got that low. Uh, so any updates that they do to, the LCR does to their water conservation track, water conservation plan or drought contingency plan, the firm water customers must comply with those changes, uh, that our drought contingency plan has to follow, either be the same or more stringent than theirs. Uh, this is just a quick recap of, uh, the Highland Lakes, so again, the Highland Lakes levels of Lake Travis and Lake Buchanan, uh, this is, we had some pretty great rains in May, so we're not gonna be probably going into any kind of water rationing this summer. Uh, however, there's some, you know, depending on how the summer goes can be kind of bleak, uh, for water supply for the central Texas region. And again, this is not just a Flugerville, this is a central Texas, right? So anybody in region K is in the same boat of relying on the Highland Lakes. So our, our current drought contingency plan that's currently adopted, uh, there, there's multiple stages of this that were adopted last year, the water conservation stage, which is year round, uh, is a maximum two times per week watering. Uh, the stage one goes down to one day a week watering, and that was based on a time and also Highland Lakes level, uh, the combined capacity of the Highland Lakes, uh, our production capacity of our treatment facilities, as well as Lake Flugerville's level. Um, and then that continues, uh, to get more and more stringent depending on where the Highland Lakes are, what our production capacity is, and also what Lake Flugerville's currently at.
Are those ands or ors?
Those are ors.
Ors, so, so from March 1st to October 31st, we're on one time a week regardless of the, uh, level of the lake?
No, those are.
So that's an and.
If that's an and.
That, but, but the, is, is it just the timing and, and the others are ors?
That's correct, yes, sorry about that.
So the, the March to October, now stage two, I, I imagine that would be.
All year.
All year.
Yes, sir.
Well, if Highland Lakes falls below 1.2 million acre feet, i- is that all year as well?
No, sir, uh, well, this is current, so current, uh, it means that any time between the months of March to October, if the Highland Lakes are below 1.2 million acre feet, or our production capacity has reached 80% of capacity, or if we have, uh, Lake Flugerville is at 633 elevation, 633 feet.
But if it's February, and, and those other conditions are also met, uh, February is still just the, the twice a week.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
Where are we currently on, on those markers?
This is.
We're cur- well, we're currently, well, I'll go where we're currently at and then I'll go to the next.
Then you wanna talk to them about the update?
Well, you had the, you had the lake level on the previous slide, right?
Uh, yes, so I have, well, so I use the Highland Lakes levels, which as of about, uh, two hours ago, were at 1.14 million, uh, acre feet, so, uh, so when we look at one, and dropping steadily.
So when we pass this, we're going to, to one day a week?
We are currently on one day a week.
We are currently on one day a week.
Currently on one day a week, yes, sir.
And then they came, well, they came out with an interesting update.
Uh, yes, there's some, a little bit of politics with, uh, LCR's update.
No, LCR, LCR, no, no.
So, so, um, so again, so we're right now currently in stage, we are in stage one, which is one day a week watering, uh, we are under 1.2 million acre feet, uh, currently within the Highland Lakes, again, Lake Travis and Lake Buchanan, uh, so we, they are steadily starting to drop because rain has stopped, we got a pretty large boom last month, but we are starting to drop currently. So the changes, so some of these changes that are required, uh, based upon LCR's changes to their water conservation plan, I've highlighted them in red, outside of the year, so, uh, Councilman Revis, when you mentioned the date range, we removed the date range from the update, uh, which has, so, LCR's water conservation plan went through multiple iterations, it originally had the dates and then they removed the dates, so we have removed the dates from ours as well as an option in stage one. So this is year round, if we are below 1.2 million acre feet, same, same contingencies that we had before, same, except removing the dates for stage one. And then when you get to stage two, stage two is where it gets really fun, so stage two now, they gave two options, so you have two options when it gets to the changes, instead of 700,000, it's at 750,000 acre feet. So the change is you can either have no automatic spray irrigation, or you can allow people to irrigate for six hours a day. So here's the trouble with allowing people to water for six hours a day, how do you enforce that? AMI or regardless, six hours a day, how do you know when they're irrigating, so, and you, you're having to do that for 16,000, 17,000 people, is very difficult to enforce. So when we looked at our, some of our neighbors, so one of our neighbors did this last year, um, they did this last year and they saw no measurable decrease in water usage. So for us, our contract means that when we are at stage two, we have to reduce our water usage by a set percentage, which is 20%.
And what happens if we don't show that?
Uh, we get fined, so, uh, we're, we're.
We need to make sure people are aware.
Yeah, we, we get, we get a nice penalty from LCR if we don't comply with our water supply contract.
So people who think that, hey, listen, I don't care what these old people are talking to us about, I'm just gonna keep watering my lawn, ultimately, we get fined, and if we get fined, does that pass on to the water users?
That has to be factored into water rates. Um, so, uh, so when we look at whether it's a fine or if we're out of compliance with our contract, and it is a per day, so it is not like a, oh, we do it once, no big deal, it's a per day for every day we're in violation of that. So when we look at, we have to reduce by 20%, uh, the options are you can remove out or spray irrigation, or you can allow, you can allow it for six hour, no more than six hours per connection per day, and for when we look at our neighbors and when they did that last year, they did not get a reasonable drop in water usage that allowed them to stay within that contract if they were to do that this year. Uh, so.
By our neighbors, which cities are you referring to?
I'm talking about our, our largest suburb to the south, um, so we, we work a little bit with them because they, we don't see a lot of things, but they also do a lot of really, really weird things that, uh, sometimes they work, sometimes they don't, but they're very open with their data and we are as well. Um, and so when we looked at their data from last year, when they made that change the end of the summer, it was no depreciable decrease in actual water usage, when, which they, what they were hoping for, right, when they reduced that time.
Was there a- any other neighbor that adopted that?
There was no one in region K, uh, so there's other cities that do different things, so if you go further south, it gets into like every other week, which, so our advocate, if we were gonna keep irrigation, our, why our, our proposal was instead of doing the six hour, six hours a day that's really hard to police, it's easier to police once every other week, right? If we're gonna try to have a meaningful, meaningful impact, which has been successful in other communities too, a little bit further south of Austin, um, but.
And further north.
And further north, yes, sir, yes, um, so, um, so, but our, our goal is if we wanna make sure we stay in compliance with our contract, or, or, you know, we wanna make sure we stay under 20% every other week was our proposal to the LCR, um, which they did not go with that, where, uh, they, they went with those, these two options, and we, uh, are trying to make sure that we stay in compliance with our contract. Um, so I, I do wanna make sure to mention that the 750,000 acre feet, that is a significant drought, so.
Yeah, we are not projected to hit that this year.
Not because of the rains we got in, in May, before, if you were to look at that, if I gave you this graph, uh, in early May before we really had those rains.
It was crazy.
It was, it was absolute, we were, so there, when I mentioned this rationing plan, we had to submit a rationing plan to LCR because we were assuming that all, every, we were gonna hit 700,000 and we were gonna get into the drought worst and drought record, which is 2011 to 2013 range. Um, so there was a significant concern before those rains actually hit the basin, that we were gonna well surpass, or get well lower than 750,000 acre feet.
Yeah, I mean, based on this, uh, yeah, easily dropping.
Yes, and if you look at where we were, where, before you had that big spike in May, we were at about 850,000 acre feet before the summer.
It was, it was bad.
It was gonna be, it was, it could have been very tight, and so, um, so our, the, so the, but, so we have, they had this updated, they had this updated 750,000 acre feet to also make sure that they have enough water to be able to get through a drought worse than drought record. So with that, uh, this is a public hearing, but I'm happy to answer, uh, any questions you may have, we, I'm happy to talk about water, wastewater all day, I'm sure you're all very well aware of that, and I can keep us here until midnight if you'd like to.
All right, Brandon, I'll ask one quick question, hopefully. Um, I understand there are some water users who have rather massive systems and, and maybe they have specific agreements with the city to operate on, on different schedules, or is, does this apply to everyone without exception?
This applies to every water customer with the city of Flugerville, the only exceptions you have or exemptions you have for any, or either are current, adopted or proposed, there's things like if you're using reclaimed water, um, if you have, uh, there's, there's very specific exemptions that do not include large volume users such as, uh, you know, multifamily, commercial, industrial, those kind of things, uh, those do not get exemptions from outdoor irrigation, uh, at all, the exemption.
But do they get exemptions from the, the day of the week requirement? Cause the one day a week.
Yes, sir.
They're, okay.
Look, it's very set, set in stone with whatever day.
So if I see a, a golf course or a neighborhood or something watering on something that isn't their day?
Please snetch.
Please, yeah, please, absolutely, there's a, you can go to the water swamp boil and there's a very quick form.
Remember the motto, see something, say something.
See something, snitch.
I do, I do. I, I, I think, I think it's really important to read right here, one, um, because got this proof a couple of months ago, is, is that the LCR, for the first time ever, has come out and said that it, we are at a crisis inflection point regarding water usage in our region. They said that both conservation and new resources are necessary, which is big for them to come out and say that, cause that has not been the case nor their message for a while, but they understand that, I think many people think that it, you know, Jeebus is just gonna allow for it to rain and we're gonna be okay with it, and we've gotta be realistic looking at the history of Texas and how these droughts come into place, how that works with that. Two, I think that this is a, this is a good conversation to have regarding what we do regarding watering, but I think more importantly, we've had this conversation regarding zero scaping, and we've gotta have a conversation, I know it's gonna be hard to retrofit with what we have with subdivisions now, but moving forward, we have got to change what our plans are regarding this, which I think developers should be happy if we're saying, hey, listen, natural grass resources, et cetera on there, because what you're doing and the public, you know, for the, would you say the five or six people that watch, um, is that when you're sending that water into the plant, we're having that water treatment plant, 90% of that water usage for your home is being dumped back on your grass, that's what it is. So when we're telling you water, because people are worried and saying, oh, I can't wash my clothes, my Camilla washed dishes, no, you're fine with all those things. It's literally you taking that treated water, which you're paying for, and dumping it back on the grass in a 100 degree temperatures that we're about to be entering for the next two months or so, something like that, as well as that grass wilts away with this. So I think this is a very, I mean, in all sincerity, I think this is an excellent idea, I think we need to be more aggressive and realistic about, I don't want us to be Arizona, but we've just gotta be realistic about what this looks like, it's just like, I mean, you go up two hours up the road, there's major flooding in DFW, you go two hours south of us, there's major flooding in Houston, central Texas, it's just not the case.
So to that point, um, some residents may feel pressure to water their lawns because of HOA restrictions on, on having green lawns. Um, is there something that we need to consider and potentially include to supersede HOAs finding residences, resident, residence customers for not watering their yards and having dead grass?
Sure, um, so a couple of things, uh, uh, so I, I live in an HOA.
Sure.
So, uh, so, uh, so if there's a drought restriction in place where it's minimize, mitigating your ability to actually keep healthy grass, which if you're living in central Texas, you have more than likely Bermuda grass, which one day a week watering is not always, it should be able to keep it alive and it does go dormant in high temperatures, so, uh, but we're, we always go to bat with residents if they're, with residents if their HOA is gonna threaten to find them for not watering their grass more than one day a week, right, or something along those lines, uh, so we're, we do the same thing and a little bit of shameless plug for our flourishing flora, flourishing flora that helps like residents get zero scaping, where we do the same thing, where we're like, we'll go to bat with you with your HOA, and we do the same thing, if they, they have a problem with their HOA, we're, we're there to support them the same way, especially if we're under drought restrictions and they know that we're only able to water X amount.
So I remember, um, Eddie doing several presentations over the years on, on the zero escaping program, and you had a name for it.
Flourishing, I, I, it's flourishing flora, but it's PF.
Yeah, sure, of course it is. Uh, are, given, uh, given the future outlook on water and, and understanding where the, the usage and the waste is, in my opinion, watering your lawn is a waste, but, um, are, are we looking at expanding that program and, and, and talking with Flip's team and making that program more available to people?
Sure, so we, so we do a lot of public outreach as far as, we wanna make sure we have the data to show like how much water is saved on a, on the program, so, and in order to do that, we need enough, uh, time. Um, so the ones that we had that were real early in the program, we're showing like 30% water savings across someone that, like changed a certain amount of square footage, right, and that's, that's great, right? We love those success stories. I think we were trying to work with them to do, uh, something similar like a video about it, like what they did, how they worked with the city and that kind of thing. Um, so yeah, we're absolutely wanting to do more and more educational things and we're working with the library as well to work with like a demonstration piece, so that way residents can like, if you're going to the library, there's a plant there, right, and it's got the QR code, what tells you where to go in the library to read more about it, so that way you know all the information about planting a native plant that doesn't require as much water.
And so, uh, by inference, I'm, I'm hearing, you said, you mentioned Bermuda grass, so Bermuda grass uses less water than St. Augustine, right? And it sounds like significantly.
Significantly, yes, sir.
So for new development, then should we consider, I mean, I know we can't change facades and whatnot, uh, control that, but should we consider some sort of ordinance, uh, prescribing Bermuda grass?
So we currently already do, uh, so Saint, so, uh, it has to be drought resistant grass is already required by our development code, um, so, and we're also working with, uh, you know, Jeremy's team and the folks updating the UDC to also minimize the amount of irrigate, not minimize, but make more non-irrigated space for new development. Uh, so, so, but St. Augustine and water thirsty turf is already not allowed for new developments.
And, and for those folks that have it, uh, is that part of our flourishing flora program?
We are not.
To replace it?
We don't discriminate on grass type, so if they have St. Augustine and they wanna convert it to a non-irrigated space, we're happy to work with them.
Got you, thank you.
And to answer your question regarding, um, HOAs, that's an issue there, causing sort of, they're LCR, and maybe this is what, um, the legislative committee may look at, they're looking at trying, then it needs legislative fix, that's what it needs, it needs, that's ultimately what it needs, it needs legislative fix, because just like you said, you can go to bat with, um, court and everything else over there as well, but that has to be fixed from a legislative standpoint to allow for us to override these things, so that becomes an issue when they place things like that.
I'll make a note.
That's a really, that would actually be a.
All right, any other questions, Council? Is there anybody in the public wishing to make comment? Move to close the public hearing? Second. We have a motion, the second to close the public hearing. Move to approve the ordinance? Second. Motion, the second to approve ordinance. And motion carried again, thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank y'all. Thank y'all.
Mayor, can we run that vote one more time? We missed.
Which vote?
Mr. Rogers, this, this last one, I'll start it again.
Okay. Revo on approving.
How did he delete himself?
I pressed the yes button. I don't know what happened. Not yet. All right. I, I do show up. Mr. Rogers disapproved. All right. Uh, our next item is to conduct a public hearing and consider approving ordinance on first reading with caption reading ordinance of the city of Fliverville, Texas, amending ordinance number 1203-15-224 of the city of Fliverville, Texas, as amended by changing the zoning designation approximately 32.6197 acres of land out of the C S Perry survey number two, abstract number 1621, and the Sephrum Isolene Survey number one, abstract 265, both in Travis County, Texas, from planned unit development, general business, and agricultural conservation to planned unit development district to be known as the Downtown East Project, planned unit development, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing severability, and providing an effective date. Mr. Fazell.
Mayor and council, so this is the Downtown East Project, in northwest corner of Pecan and FM 685. I heard from the communication staff earlier today, 20 seconds, we recommend approval on this. Any questions? Just kidding. So it's on planned unit development ag and G B one district of surrounding areas on the east and on the south and west are G B one. The yellow is the single family neighborhood, Willow Creek subdivision. Um, we have gone through a large portion of, of time having conversations about this particular project. Uh, land was acquired in 20, the end of 21. Um, we've been going through the process of finding the right people, the right players to be able to work through determining, um, what the needs are and the vision for this particular project, and now are, are actually, are coming to you to be able to provide, uh, recommendation and to, um, provide some information on what this planned unit development is. So what we're proposing to do is do an extension of the downtown, establishing a neighborhood, um, smaller lots, smaller parcels, um, extension of roads, putting all of that into, um, a project that will deliver something that I think the city will all be excited about, and will deliver something that, um, is unique and a continuation of our downtown expansion. Um, so the comprehensive plan identifies this area for mixed use, um, neighborhood, so is the, the core of downtown is also in that same kind of classification, which basically encourages mixed use development, and looking at pedestrian connections, finding ways to be able to establish a unique, uh, sense of place. This is a project that proposes to do all of that. Um, we're proposing to establish three different zoning districts on this particular property. Um, these are not our base zoning districts, these are specific to, um, this particular project and, and for Downtown East. The reason that we do that is because we wanted to make sure that we're hitting all of the pieces that we need to hit, give the, the city the flexibility to, um, grow and, and adapt with market changes. And so, um, was presented inside of the details of how to establish this particular development. Um, I mentioned we have three different zoning districts, the yellow ones that you see in the blocks, there's seven different parcels, that's where the development will occur. Um, the middle is the heart of the, of the development, and that's our, our Plaza zoning classification, and then the green stuff that's around the side is our P F district, and that's our open space. That's about nine and a half acres worth of land that'll include, um, trails in the future and, and really, uh, be that green space and that, that public open space. This is supposed to be, um, we're looking to phase this project and move through, the first phase will include both city hall as well as the recreation center. City hall is proposed on the south side of, um, of Main Street there. It will include the extension of Main Street to run from railroad over to FM 685. Um, the recreation center, the multi-generation recreation center is proposed to be located right on 685, so that there is, uh, that notion of you have arrived and, and to be able to create that synergy right at the very beginning. You also can see that there are some surface lots that are proposed right now, those are surface parking lots that will be then transferred and, and as development comes on, and they'll be replaced with, um, parking structures and, and others, part, other portions of the development. That little green box that you see just to the left or to the west of the Civic Plaza represents parcel five, and that's really the area where we're looking to, um, focus attention in the future, once we go through the phase one. On the screen is a conceptual of how the project could, could find itself, um, through the different phases. Again, phase one is, is set in stone. Um, how the rest of the project moves forward, that's why the design book gives us that flexibility. Um, the orange represents mixed use, um, from the residential aspect, there's opportunities to have hotel in here, office developments. Where those pieces actually land is still to be determined. Five could end up with an office, or it could have, uh, mixed, mixed use there, but we do know that commercial is anticipated and, and focused along Main Street, also pushing out towards the Plaza. Residential development is anticipated more towards the north. That residential development is anticipated to have, what, what's baked into the code is to be able to give you the opportunity to look at projects that might be, um, what we call a gerbin, which is kind of that semi-urban, you've heard that, that term when we were doing the corridor zoning, um, where interior parking spaces, um, are surrounded by buildings. But then you might also have the opportunity to go with a more intense development, um, that provides their structure parking garages and, and of that sort. So, um, on the screen, on the right-hand side, what you see in the blue, the lighter blue reflects, um, the overall, most of, most of the project is a maximum height of 65 feet, um, which would account for five-floor opportunity. Um, there is a caveat to that, that up along the north end on parcel seven, um, and parcel six, where it's adjacent to the single family or within a closer proximity, there's a hundred-foot separation there. And so within that zone, a maximum height of 40 feet would be allowed, so no more than three stories, and then you'd do a step up. Um, we put in, into the code some allocation for buffer yards to make sure that there was buffering, um, vegetated buffering that would come in, um, adjacent to the single family that would come in as the project is developed on that particular parcel. There's also vegetation components that would be required with the structure, so that it also helps with sightlines. Um, what you see on the left-hand side represents that green space, that P F zoning area, that's where fire, fire, um, routes will go through, um, fire lanes, but that's also a dual-use kind of location, so it's anticipated to have trail kind of connections going through there as well. So it would be an active space, um, a vegetated active space. I always mess up these streets. Meadow Creek is to the west, to the northwest Cedar Ridge. Um, to the west, again, we're not anticipating to be much closer, but that, that provision of the hundred feet, um, would apply there as well. Um, back up, that darker blue color is 170 feet from 685, that allows for actually higher density, so that's an 85-foot, uh, building. So it gives you the opportunity to be able to have something unique along 685, but then respecting the adjacent, um, developments just to the north and west. Uh, frontage requirements is something that was built into this code, so as, again, we have these parcels that are established, we wanna make sure that the design and the look and feel is there, it's baked in. Um, there are certain areas that have, um, a pedestrian priority frontage, which means that basically it's gonna have retail-ready spaces involved in there. There's some definitions and clarifications on what that means, but basically storefront types of windows, awnings, those kinds of things that you would get in, in that type of setting. That's what's reflected on the left-hand side of that, um, that left picture with the red lines. On the right-hand side is the orange little lines there are pedestrian friendly, friendly frontages, and those are areas where you would see like residential having stoops out onto the public sidewalk and creating that kind of energy there. On the green, on the left-hand side of this slide, um, the neighborhood buffer greenbelt frontages is to, again, talk about activating those greenbelt quadrants. Um, the ground floor would have like outdoor, the, the opportunity for a stoop or a patio kind of thing that would be there, so that that way that green space is activated. Um, upper stories are not allowed to have balconies, and that was to be sensitive again to the neighborhood. On the right-hand side of that picture, the general frontages, what's reflected in blue, are those areas where they would, it would be great to design them with the pedestrian frontages, but there are gonna be situations where we won't be able to have every side of the building all meeting those things, and so there'll be attention put there for landscaping, murals, art, that kind of thing, lighting, um, would be anticipated there. I mentioned at the beginning, parking garages, so we have, we'll have surface parking to start with, then transition into the opportunity for district garages. Parking garages are also discussed in here, so like I said, we, it goes into the, the depths of, of everything in this project. Um, this just reflects how in, in those pedestrian frontages on the left-hand side of the screen, you're not gonna lose that, that pedestrian frontage, um, the parking will, will be set back so that you can retain that. On the right-hand side is where that general frontage is, and that's where you can anticipate at some point in the, having a, a parking structure there, having parking adjacent to that, uh, that would be screened. The very beginning, I mentioned that the green space, that plaza space, which would be adjacent to the recreation center and just north of the, um, city hall is anticipated to be approximately an 18,000 square foot facility, um, give or take. Um, there's programming that's, that's being worked through, but really trying to activate that space and turn it into a, a, a unique place for residents to be able to go to for Again, the P F district is along the west and along the south, and that's the, the green open space areas where trail systems are anticipated to come in. Um, I mentioned that residential development is, is something that would come on board. There's nine and a half acres of this green open space that would be included. The parkland development fee will be a requirement for any kind of residential development that comes in. So land is likely allocated already, but the development fee to be able to improve those green spaces will come with that residential development.
It looks like, so I'm seeing a pedestrian bridge there in the green, two pedestrian bridges maybe.
Yeah, crossings of the creek would be something that can be looked at, looked into to see if there's a feasibility there. There will definitely be a crossing on, uh, Main Street on the bridge, there'll be a, a wider sidewalk on the north and a shorter.
And then in that southeast corner, at least orientation of the map, um, it looks like we're taking folks to, to a crosswalk.
Over at the southeast corner, taking it over to 685 and Pecan Street, yes. And so that would be something also that we'll need to be looking at as we, as 685 is expanded, and we're working through that corridor project, uh, making sure that we have safe crossings and that we've allocated that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, mentioned the transportation plan, so that's, that's pulled into this, again, Main Street extension, um, from railroad over to 685 is included. Um, the right-of-way width is a little bit different than what's in the downtown area, a little bit different than what's reflected in the transportation plan today. However, it still maintains the same intent. So in downtown right now, the right-of-way width is, I believe, 90 feet, and that's to accommodate for angled parking spaces. What's proposed is to have, um, Main Street have a 70-foot of right-of-way width, so that we get the sidewalks, we still have the parking, it's just parallel parking spaces versus angled parking spaces. What that does is ensures that there's enough developable area and not just allocated towards right-of-way. Um, the, the, um, gr, uh, orange lines that you see is B Street and C Street, they will have formal names when we go through the subdivision process, we will establish that. Um, those are 60 feet of right-of-way, um, anticipated to be more of a, a slower type of street. Um, travel lanes within, uh, within both of those are right at the moment at 10 feet in width. Um, we're having conversations with the fire department to make sure that we meet their requirements and that we, we ensure safety, but we also still retain the intent of having slower traffic in there, um, and, and getting the streetscape that we're looking for.
Jeremy, are we considering impact to the west on Main Street as it travels through old downtown? Uh, this, this street's gonna have a great entranceway, it may look more inviting, inviting more traffic to come through here, uh, especially if they wanna avoid the Pecan Street intersection. Have, have we considered projections on how that'll impact the rest of Main Street and how we're gonna get that traffic back onto Pecan?
Um, I, I think I'm, I'm following you. I think a traffic impact analysis would be something that we, we would be having conversations on, John. Is there anything different there? So, sorry. Sorry to put you on the spot.
We haven't specifically looked at that.
Sorry, this is John Palmer with Garza. He's one of our engineers.
We are not the traffic engineer, we're the civil engineer, but we're working closely with the traffic engineer. Um, I don't believe they've specifically looked at that, uh, distribution of traffic, but we certainly can.
Cause it, cause a lot of times we look at these things in the microcosm of the development, and sometimes we overlook the impact to adjacent areas, right? And so I'm thinking of downtown Main Street right now, where if I wanna go check my mail, I can practically walk in the middle of the street and whatever, right? There, there's tree cover and, uh, so you're gonna have height restrictions in terms of what can go through there without tearing up the trees. Um, it, I, I, looking at this, I just imagine this beautiful new street, and everyone comes across the bridge and they hit railroad, and it's like, then what do you do, you know? Uh, and so it seems like we need to be cognizant and plan for that continuation, and also to help divert that traffic on one of Second, Third, Fourth Street, whatever, divert that traffic back to Pecan.
And we, we can take that into consideration.
So, so I would just add to that, uh, Councilmember McDonald, uh, I know in the work that, that I've done, that I've put into the Downtown East Project, we've long talked of Main Street as a way to get people into downtown, not a way to get people through downtown. Uh, it's, it's not about cutting through the traffic, we need to make sure that Pecan and 685 are built up to support the traffic that is traversing through the area. The, the purpose of the Main Street extension is to enable people to get to downtown. Uh, I wouldn't want to do anything that would help encourage people to use it as a cut-through. Like that would be counterproductive to the, to the area.
I, I understand. Uh, and, and one of the early concepts that we looked at also was a road diet, where we, we had one-way direction travels on Pecan and Main, uh, and, and we moved away from that, and, and I'm fine with all that, I'm just, you know, regardless of whether or not you're trying to, to get people into downtown, people are gonna see this as a brand-new way to avoid the intersection to the south there, and then they're gonna be stuck at river.
And when they discover that they should've taken it the other way, they will next time.
Okay. That, that's one way to, that's one way to plan, uh, but, uh, it, it just seems like we need to, I'm not saying put a whole lot of effort into redesigning the downtown traffic plan, but, but just know that whatever our predictions of that traffic volume is on Main Street, that's not gonna be parking. And, and I don't know, I'm not a traffic guy, right? Uh, but I, I would just like to, uh, if, if we're gonna have, what Doug says, if, if we're gonna have a lot of cars driving down there and saying, oh, man, I really shouldn't have drove this way, uh, then make sure we have signage so they know how to get out, or, or whatever, but just have a plan, is all I'm saying.
Sure. Yeah, one thing I was gonna add is, I mean, the segment of Main Street through the property here being zoned, you know, speed is considered, there's a couple of speed table crosswalks. So I think the goal, like you said, is to really get people into downtown, speed, keep people at very low speeds, so.
Big sign at the front that says no through traffic, I, cause you, I mean, I'm seeing Amazon trucks driving down here, right? Cause I see Amazon trucks do all kinds of crazy stuff, and so, I don't know, I just wanna make sure that we have a plan.
Yeah.
You want a sign that says no Amazon trucks?
No, I don't want that, but I do want a plan.
So one other, one other street that, that's proposed inside of this is, um, D Street, and that's a pedestrian street that, that's anticipated to provide a connection between Main Street and, and, um, C Street and via. Interesting events, having that pedestrian environment, maybe having food trucks or something like that along there. And on the side, just the right, represents, um, kind of the thoughts on what that cross-section would be. It's a, also an opportunity for, for fire to potentially use that. Um, we also looked at 685 and making sure that we've accounted for that future expansion along, um, 685, and so setbacks and, and where the infrastructure goes, and that type of thing has been included inside of this plane. So in a nutshell, that's what the, the, um, Downtown East Plan envisions, um, that's where creating this scale, excuse me, gives that pedestrian connections, gives us the feeling that we've been looking for, for expanding of the downtown area. Um, Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this, uh, with a vote of seven to zero. I'd be happy to answer any questions tonight. Um, our design team is also here, you've met John, um, Jim Adams with McCann Studio, and they helped design and create this, it's also in the house as well as Corin Crawford, Griffin Swinton.
Okay. Any questions, council?
Uh, Jeremy, just to, to clarify, lot one, two, and three are the size that they are, uh, because of, uh, floodplain restrictions, is that right?
Yes, we have floodplain issues over in there.
They, they couldn't be any bigger than they are.
They, yeah, so 3 definitely gets shrunk because of the flood plain, same with 2. 2 gets elevated, and the structure itself will have some elevation associated with it because of the flood plain. Same with 1, yes.
The proper explanation may be, they couldn't be expanded without a lot of expense.
Right, you can always re-divert a river, but, yeah. The Tiber flows one way for a reason.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public wishing to make public comment?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to second to close the public hearing. And? Motion carried. Need a motion to approve.
Move to approve the ordinance for the rezoning. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Motion carried again. Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy.
If we could run that vote one more time, we missed David Rogers.
Okay. Who did we miss?
We missed David.
Oh, okay. Waving my hand in front of them.
Come on.
What, it disappeared again?
See, we missed you this time.
Motion carried. All right. Moving on to item 7, discuss and consider action toward, to award a contract for delinquent municipal court fines and utility billing collection services to McCurry, Vasilek, Bragg, and Allen PC Attorneys at Law, and authorize the city manager to execute the same.
I'm just going to use abbreviations, if that's okay, Mayor?
That's fine.
A lot of names there. So this is for your consideration, it's actually two separate contracts. You could take action on them independently if you so choose. We've been using MVBA since July of 2021, so it's been about three years. We're not required to do an RFP for these services, but certainly it's best practice, and so we threw our line back in the water, see what was out there. And so we had three responses. We had four staff members from municipal court, finance, city manager's office, to review those and to score those. It was MVBA, Linebarger, and Purdue, and they were given scores of 357, 346, and 290 respectfully, which would make MVBA the highest score. There's a full criteria that was put in the RFP on how they were graded. I'm not going to list those for you, it is attached to your agenda, but, you know, it's talking about relative experience, resources, qualifications of the firm, and the staff assigned to us, that sort of thing, collection strategy, et cetera. And so like I previously mentioned, the MVBA was the highest score, and we do recommend a contract with them to do court collections. Secondly, as we went through the process to do this RFP for court collections, we discovered a need to get another firm to do our UB collections. We were using a firm that went out of business in 2022, and since then, we've just been doing it kind of in-house, and we still do. We, but it's not as robust as one of these collection firms can do. And so, now, while it wasn't a part of the RFP, and again, RFP is not required, regardless of the firm that you would use, the mechanics are still the same, and we would expect that to score the same, it's the same staff, same process, so we would recommend MVBA to also handle UB collections for us, and that is a separate contract. And so that makes it easy, it's kind of a, not only administratively, we have one firm to look to for all collections for the city, but also externally, one point of contact that gets everybody to the same webpage to whatever your collections needs are. So with that in mind, we do recommend approval of these two contracts.
Well, these are two separate contracts.
They are two separate contracts. So you could act on both of them in a single motion, or take them independently, if you want or not the other, it's your choice.
Do we have presentations from the vendors?
We do not.
We've had, in the past, when we've looked at this question, we've had vendors come and make presentations.
We do have representative here from the firm.
Well, I think they went through a vetting process, and I think.
They've been serving us for a few years.
Yeah. And, I mean, it sounds like we have two that scored well, and then a third that.
Not as well.
Not in that same league. I would, I would hope we would hear from the top two and get a sense of what the differences are in the, in their proposals.
Yeah. Yeah. MVBA is here.
Motion to approve item 7A. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 7A. Other discussion, council? Okay. Yeah, that was for both contracts.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you. 7B executive session, Tristan, would you mind reading the caption of this, if you don't mind?
Absolutely. A 7B executive session deliberations in accordance with section 551.071 and 551.087 of the Texas Government Code to discuss economic development negotiations and financial information received from businesses expanding or relocating in the city of Plugerville and to seek legal advice regarding such projects, incentives, and negotiations for project top floor.
Okay. All right, we are in executive session.
No, they're, they're some.
I've been.
You sure?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, that's. I gotta wait for everybody.
We got one more?
Oh, Rudy.
Yes, sir.
Resolution proclamation. Okay, are we all back?
Yes, sir.
We're back from executive session. Uh, no action was taken. Uh, there were several points.
Sound like a wake.
About this particular topic that were in question, some information that was not made available to council, um, some information that was not made available to our city attorney in whole. Uh, there were some questions about agreements. Um, and so it was the, uh, discretion of council to postpone this item for two weeks and have staff work with, um, PCDC staff and Ventrex and getting some of the documentation and information that council felt that we needed to make the final decision on. So this item will come back, uh, July, what?
Nine.
July ninth.
Okay.
Okay. And I'm, uh, did the Ventrex people leave?
Top floor.
We, or, or top floor, but we may need to convey that information to them. Okay. All right, moving on to, um, item seven C discussing consider action to approve a resolution establishing a mobility master plan, technical advisory committee.
Mayor and council, so this is a, an item that's associated with the mobility master plan. What we're looking for is establishing a technical advisory committee today, so looking to y'all for suggestions on who, who you would like to have or your recommendations for being on that committee. Basically that, that those folks will be representative of the community, being able to provide the feedback in as we move through the process.
How many people are you looking for on?
Um, I believe in total, we were looking for fifteen.
For how many?
Fifteen. So that would be two from each council member and then three from you, mayor.
And, and do you want us to just say those names for you now, or?
Yes, please.
We can't, I mean, what if we have no name?
It's okay if you don't.
Well, I've got, uh, um, uh, one of, one of mine's actually here in the audience today. Um, Mr. Nick Getchy and Ms. Jackie Sartor, um, I've spoken with both of them, both have agreed to participate.
And I'll have mine submitted as well.
Do we, do we, we don't need to vote on this, right? We're good?
We do need to vote.
Okay.
We need to see how many names we have today and then that might deter.
So you got two.
Doug took my two, so.
That's what I was thinking.
So I'll have two.
I got the confirmations.
I'll have two at a later date.
Same here. Okay. Very soon.
So is there a, a restriction on geographic area? They have to be?
No. Technical area.
Okay.
All right, mayor, read their ten motion.
Absolutely.
Motion to approve seven C is presented.
Second.
What was presented?
Yeah, the names Jackie Sarter and.
Uh, Nick Getchy.
Nick Getchy.
Cecil Baez and Frank Quintez.
Okay, that's four, yeah.
And we'll bring it back on the line.
Okay. Motion and second to approve those, or those four candidates to the, uh, technical advisory committee. Okay?
And I apologize, who seconded the motion?
Doug made the motion.
No, I didn't. Rudy made the motion.
Councilor Matarita made the motion, I, I don't know who seconded.
Did we get a second?
I, we didn't get a second.
Second.
Second, okay. All right.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, motion carried, okay. So council, if y'all will submit, as I will, the, uh, subsequent names for this committee. All right, uh, moving on to discuss and consider action to approve a resolution amending the Flugerville Community Development Corporation bylaws.
Yes. Are we, are we punting at her? All right. Good evening again, mayor and council. Um, so this was requested by council, um, to bring back a, a proposed structure for PCDC to allow for that, uh, to allow for that staff to report to the city manager or her designee. Um, there was two key changes to the bylaws, which can, as you know, can be amended at city council's sole discretion at any time per, per the bylaws. And so what we did is we, um, took language and, uh, borrowed language from, that's very similar to what you'll see in Round Rock and Georgetown, uh, where they created a general manager. And by default, your city manager is the general manager of your EDC. Um, and that person, your general manager shall employ such full or part-time employees as are needed to carry out the programs of the board. So you'll see that language in the bylaws, um, that previously had language that described the duties of the executive director, now swapped out for that language. Um, that's the biggest change. Um, the other change is, uh, amending section five oh nine, so that was section six dot oh one. Um, and five dot oh nine, it is, says under the direction of, of the, um, let's see. So basically it, it has to do with the agenda setting. So it would, it would mirror how we do other, other, uh, like planning and zoning or whatever, where we, um, help establish that agenda, but those members can, uh, can request certain items be added to the agenda. Um, so basically mimic, um, the other boards where staff supports those boards, um, and helps to, helps to manage the agenda. Um, so otherwise the other things are just kind of cleanup and kind of just, uh, fine replace sort of things. Um, but, so those are the two main, main items.
Do we, do we have a slide on those so I can see them?
I don't, I don't have a slide.
I'm looking for them in the packet and it's.
It is, so there's a red line, there's a red line document in the packet. And so you'll look under article six.
All right, wait, I'm down on page.
Two, three, four.
I think I locked up my computer.
And so you'll see five dot oh nine and six dot oh one, that's the, that's the bulk of your changes there.
So I'm just gonna say section five oh nine, the changes there give me great pause.
All right, let's have the discussion.
I, I don't know that I find a discussion even worthwhile because I, you're not convincing me to go along with any of these changes.
Can you elaborate?
That is, that one in particular is scary.
What's the, go ahead with the, what's five oh nine?
Oh, that, uh, that, that we add the language that two board directors may request to add an item to an agenda. Uh, that two board members may add an item to an agenda, but that they may request to add a mi, item to the agenda. Uh, and that the general manager is responsible for setting the agenda rather than the president. I know even here, you know, we, we went back and forth with the charter and the mayor, you know, the, the head of the body is the one who sets the agenda. Uh, and I think that continues to be appropriate for the PCDC that the head of the body is the one who sets the agenda. So that whole section, all changes in it just.
So can I ask, so can I, can I ask why five oh nine added ma, uh, request? Request two? So I mean, really it's, this is, this is for your consideration, right? It's, it's no different than like Jeremy helping to put together the agenda for planning and zoning. Like they, there's nothing in the, the bylaws or the charter that dictates who does it. It's the, the staff supports it, but that, 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 those staff people are working hand in hand with those board members. And if they want to see something that's. That is, that is, well, that's a, that's a very lawyerly answer.
And that's not what it says.
That was put in there, why was, what was the intent, the, these, things aren't just put there. Why was that added? What was, what was contemplated in fact?
Why was the change required?
Yeah. It's not required, none of this is required. No, no, no.
Why, why did, why did the person who amended this feel the need to amend that particular section in that?
And you know, and you know, I don't, you know, we, I don't like to play games with that, just asking, I'm just asking why.
I don't need the discussion.
Yeah, I'm just asking why was that the case? I mean, I guess it was just to kind of mirror our practices with other boards more than anything else. Look, because like, I, I, and, and that also has to be considered with the board, and to be honest with you, because I think that, I like the idea of what it is regarding, hey, listen, you got two people, wanna put an agenda item? Put the agenda item. Like I don't, I don't, that's why, again, I, I, we're asking a straight question. I get that you may not want to be able to tell us who put it out there with that, but that just doesn't make sense to me. Just have that from there. I mean, I don't know how, the rest of y'all, I obviously know what, how Doug feels about it.
I agree, we can keep the language as it is.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Don't change anything in, in five point oh nine.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. Totally fine, yeah.
Let's see, what else is?
And I do think that, I do, um, and who, who's approves the agendas right now on PCDC, isn't the president?
Yeah.
Yeah. So why don't we like that?
Is that a question?
Yeah.
I don't like the question.
I feel like I'm, I'm being asked to negotiate, uh, the terms of something that I, I don't want to adopt anyway, so.
That's fair, I'm just asking the intent, cause I, again, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say malintend, like, why don't we want the president to approve that? The president, and apparently it was the president and, great, or is that the red line? It looks like the president and the executive director was the original.
That was just the president is responsible for setting the agenda. There, there is the red line.
Oh, yeah, over here, so yeah. So why was, why, why don't we want that?
Well, even with that, I mean, the fundamental problem with this proposal is it does away with the executive director and it cuts the authority of the board.
And it puts the entire power of the, uh, the agenda and the entire agenda of the PCDC in the hands of the general manager.
So what I heard Serena says that they've already conceded that, so are we okay with leaving? I mean, so my personal opinion is this, besides that at least five business days, yeah, that's fair. Um, how often does it usually take to get the agenda?
What do you mean get the agenda?
So we're saying that.
Get an agenda and apply it to, in Legislaw, when do they have to?
Yeah.
Oh, for council or for PCDC?
PCDC.
Oh, we don't know.
I mean, it goes into Legislaw, that's how it's posted.
Yeah, yeah. We would follow the same practice. Okay, so, saying the same practice that we do. Okay, then, yeah, I think, um, then I think five days is, I just want them to be able to have time, right? That's the thing that I, I was get concerned about that. But yeah, if you're willing to do that, yeah, I say you keep it as a president and I say that you let two people put an item on the agenda. I mean, that, we don't, I, I definitely, I definitely agree that, um, it is, um, frustrating at times to see, um, the lack of conversation, so I see why we'd want to have more cohesion, but we also want, we don't want people to be lemmings. You know what I mean? Like, we want people to be like on here.
I do want to, we weren't actually thinking it that way, I was thinking more about, the mayor and I have a great, um, relationship in how we set an agenda together. I don't think the mayor and I are over here arguing over what goes on the agenda and who has authority.
Well.
And so it was more about, um, we usually know what needs to go to the agenda, cause the contracts and the.
What's the charter say?
So it's, he, so he's, uh, the exact word is approves or sets?
Sets.
So, so I rely on, on him to, to force it to, but it's a partnership.
And, and I'll, but also keep this in mind, that hasn't always been the case with the city manager and the mayor. You know, prior, prior mayor, prior city manager, no, that definitely was not always the case. And so you don't know, you know, you just don't set up systems for people as they are, but what can happen. And I think that in this instance, okay, you have the president.
So it should just be the president, not the president and the executive director? Cause that would lean towards now we're saying only the president.
That's what it says now.
Yeah, that's what, that's what it says now.
And I, I.
What do you, what do you, what PCDC members, what do you, I mean, working with the executive director, that's fine, um, but I'd also, I like the way, just like it says that, I'd say the president is set, um, sets the agenda, and then you, you would have the assumption that they're gonna work with the executive director on these things. And y'all appoint the president and you also appoint the manager, so.
That's right.
We'll get it done.
That's your failsafe.
Okay, so, we argued that out. What else, well, you said you're arguing against yourself, so you're just saying that anything that struck out here, you just.
No, no, I mean, I, I don't like the, uh, the idea of the, the city taking it over. I think the autonomy, the separation of powers is, uh, an important distinction in the organization. I think, uh, putting all that power in, uh, the hands of staff is a bad idea. I think there's a whole reason why we appoint seven members to the board legislatively, we're required to appoint seven members to the board. I think they need to be left to, to do their job.
May I stand corrected on five oh nine, mayor? I do wanna, I do wanna clarify this. Our charter says, the mayor shall, with the assistance and input of the city manager, set and approve the agendas. So it does actually talk about both. Just, just saying, yeah.
Well, with the assistance, I mean, cause.
Assistance, the support of staff, the mayor sets the agenda.
Cause nobody, well.
I just misspoke, I wanna make sure.
Some people, but most people, you know, they're, and I, I had the same expectation that's gonna happen here.
The authority is vested in the mayor.
Now, he took off his glasses. What are you gonna say?
I'm still, I'm still chewing on it.
Cause I know when you take off your glasses, that means, that means that you wanna say something, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah, we all in words.
I have a tell.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a while. Um, and, and you're right, James, you did exactly what we said, I said, would like to see the framework of this. Um, obviously we've got an input from PCDC members too as well, um, both on council and off council on this. And, so you wouldn't pre, your, I, I, my impression would be you wouldn't be presenting this, the staff would not present this unless you believe this is necessary to help ameliate issues that are happening with PCDC, am I correct? I'll come back to that. I would not say that, I wouldn't say that necessarily. Um, I think we, and to Charlie's point, any, there, there's nothing wrong with the current structure. It can work any structure. You got the right people in the right places, any of these structures could work. This, we were requested to bring back a proposed structure, this is one way to do it. So you're agnostic on the proposal? That's true.
That's true.
That's fair.
I mean, that's, yeah, and it says a lot. So then I guess it's council, what you want to do?
Move to table the proposal.
Second.
Isn't that forever?
Yeah, kinda kills it.
But two can bring it back.
Yes.
Or the mayor.
I, I think there's still some discussion to be had, but I don't know.
The mayor does set the agenda with.
Mayor sets the agenda.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to table.
All right, now discussion.
Discussion. My perspective is that there are some structural changes that we need to make. Uh, tabling it kills our ability to, to move forward with making any structural changes. Um, and so, uh, I think, I think tabling is the wrong.
The wrong action here.
I think tabling is the easy out for this particular. And I don't think we always should do something that's easy. I think we're here to do the hard thing, sir. I agree.
What do you think? I, I agree, it's an easy out. I think we, we're just passing the buck to another day, and we're gonna have this discussion, so we are going to have this discussion one way or another.
We've had this discussion.
No, we will have it to vote.
We'll continue to have it. We'll continue to have it.
We, we had a
You can table it as much as you want, but, you know, you know what I mean?
Didn't like which way the vote went, and it, it came back, so
I think
Let's have a vote on it.
Okay, well, to have a vote on it or on the, uh, motion to
The vote is, the vote is essentially, uh, to leave it the way it is, which is how we voted four, three
Well, then he
A month ago.
That's not what he voted. He voted
It's essentially what he moved, he moved to do.
Yeah, council, I, I think Serena brought up an excellent point, is that we're, uh, in the shadows of recruiting an executive director. And as long as we fiddle fart around with this, it ain't gonna happen.
I, I heard those words come out of your mouth. So I'll, let's do call the question.
Call the question.
And then
See what happens.
Yeah. I know it's gonna happen, so then, now we can go ahead and have a discussion.
Okay.
Okay, so, so now to your point.
What discussion do we need to have about structural changes?
So I, I liked 509. I like the way it was.
I agree.
Yeah, 509 is not the question here.
Well, no, no, no.
The question is, does PCDC report into the city manager or report to the board?
Well, no, the question was, to, to his point, was that he thinks some things need to be changed, other things, you know, he has no qualms, he has any heartburn on. So I like 509 the way it is, and
The way it is amended?
No, 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 no.
The, the way it is prior amendment?
Prior, prior to amendment.
I think we can agree on that.
Yeah. And so, like, so Jim on 601. Because there, there definitely has to be some sort of alignment, but I also don't think that and I'm wondering, because the changes that we're making anyway, and staffers, staff said, they already said it on the record, they're agnostic to this. So have we looked at saying, is there anything outside of just, um, completely having an understanding manager to have changes done with it? Obviously, we know that there's gonna be dramatic staff changes in the next, oh, I don't know, two days?
I took my glasses off.
Oh.
So I guess the, the larger question is, right, if if we're trying to bring this in-house, which we had, as Doug pointed out, a, a split vote on. If we're trying to bring it in-house, then who does the executive director report to, right? And if they report to, you know, an assistant city manager, or they report to the city manager, they're, that's their boss, right? Their boss isn't the board anymore. You know, Serena doesn't report to someone else and then come to us. She, she reports to us. And so, so to Doug's point, you know, if, if how does that, you know, how do, what's the function of the PCDC board if this executive director now becomes the general manager, and it's, 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 uh, you know, a we have a, instead of having an executive director, we have, uh, uh, an economic or a community, a community development director, right? And if we have a community development director that essentially reports to the general manager as outlined here, then is, is that the intent? Is that our goal? And if so, what balance of responsibility does that leave for the PCDC board? Which I think is what Doug's question is.
Which is legislatively required.
Well, of course, there's, we'll have a board, but
If the board has no authority or responsibility, then who's gonna apply for that board?
We, okay, that's, but that's, okay, see, you can't, you can't conflict the two, because that's a different question. That's a different question. Who would recruit for the board if in fact you, you put it under the structure as compared to what's necessarily required to actually have that board? I, I, I personally, this is, this is the part that and then the reason why I brought up the point about personnel changes. It's going to change, like literally with, now that the people there, were there or no longer there, you're gonna have a different relationships. Like, it's just going to happen. That, that's gonna happen organically with that. And, and my thought is, do, do we want to give it time to see what comes up from that before we just say, hey, get this, make Serena the, I don't even know why the general manager's the term, but here we are. You know, is that statute? Okay. Uh, of, of, of PCDC, of our economic development, because I like the idea of having something viable, hey, pseudo-independent, because, you know, let's be honest, ultimately, we have, we have control over it because of who we can put on, who we can't. But it allows, it, it, it's, it's done well by the city, you know? All the projects, we always said that when we look at economic development at 300, you're doing amazing. This organization is bad at 300 for sure with things. But we've also seen numerous times, just who's on first? And it's, it's very, it's very annoying. It just is. It's, it's something that's very frustrating to figure out, even as recently as today. It's like, what, what's going on? Is, who's, who's talking to who? And I think that changes with the personalities that you're, just organically with what's going to happen here. So, and you're right, we can't have this hanging on the vine because we need to get somebody in there who's gonna do the job. And so my thought is, okay, why don't we see how it is with the different personality dynamics? Can there be more cohesion with that? And if there's something that we can add in here to make it so there's more alignment with, to make sure that what the city does with them, sure, let's do that. But I don't know if we could throw out the whole kidding caboodle on that. And that's, that's my thought.
So, I hear you. And, and so, if the structure is, there is a executive director or community development director that reports to, uh, the PCDC board, uh, but in the organizational structure of sit, the city reports to, um, the city manager, then that still leaves the autonomy of the entity, right? You still have a board and a, and a director, but it puts that director, um, beholding, if you will, to the city manager, so we don't see things like we saw today. And, and that's my goal, right? My goal isn't to, to neuter PCDC. I, I, I've been on it too long and, and seen too many things. My goal is to make it, uh, I don't want to use the word streamline, but more efficient, right? More, uh, melded with the city staff, because we got a lot of big things going on, and, and we just don't have time to come out and say, okay, we're gonna postpone this item for two, two weeks, because we are missing significant things. And, and that's my goal, is to make it better.
Well, I think the connection between the two, between the PCDC, the PCDC and the city, I mean, we've always said in the past, we're on the same team, but we've never really acted that way. And, um, I think there have been issues in the past that have come up, and we don't really need to talk about the past, because the past is the past. I think we need to move forward. If this alignment makes more sense in terms of not only the communication, but the melding, if you will, of, of that organization with, uh, the city structure to make things, uh, use streamline. And I, I like streamline, because basically it says, you know, we cut out some of the glitches that we run into in the past, and also prevent issues that have happened in the past, because we have that connection. And the board is still a viable part of the Economic Development Corporation, because you gotta have that input from, uh, individuals that, um, feel and have a concern for the community and, and how they can effectuate a movement towards building economic, not just economic development, but anything that comes with growth in the city of Flurgerville is gonna be impacted by the, uh, PCDC board and, and where we go with that. Uh, so that I think a executive director could effectively work as a arm, if you will, or a dotted line, if you will, however you want to define it, to the, uh, city manager's office. And, um, I think that individual might feel somewhat more or well-equipped to, to do their job versus being an executive director of one entity who now has to negotiate with another entity, the city, not negotiate, but communicate, and some of the, the challenges therein as we've had in the past. I know we've, we've, uh, I don't think we've really had that connection with, with the city. When I say we, PCDC, um, although we pride, and, um, I, I just think it's time to try something new.
And, and simple things, like in terms of being able to get on teams and, and, and message, you know, a, a peer within the organization, your finance director or whatever, and say, hey, blah, blah, blah. You know, now that, there's, there's, we don't have that level of connection currently. And so, James, my question is
Why, I, it should be, that's, that's rather simple technology.
Sure, but we don't have it now, right? And so if it's so simple
Do we not? Do we legitimately not?
Yes, we do.
We do. We do have that. Yes.
So, so PCDC messaging
We can teams each other.
Yes.
Do we?
Yes.
Okay.
I would hope so.
All right, so that was a bad example.
Maybe not use, uh, the other features of teams.
Right.
Chat, yes.
Sharing, sharing documents and things like that. And one of, and one of the things that, um, uh, my PCDC lawyer, uh, was concerned about in an executive session was that city staff didn't have an appropriate NDA, and we couldn't share information, and, and there was that's what he said.
No, I'm not, I'm not
Sounds like a different problem to solve.
She whispered as you said that, so I was like
Yeah. And so, I, again, I, I have some issues around that, but I'll
Yeah, I don't think cities can sign NDAs.
So my, my point here is
I don't suggest it.
There you go.
Correct.
We can do a lot, doesn't really do it.
My, my point here is that
Doesn't mean he can defend it.
Is, James, is there a way, or have you seen other models where, where the, and I'm gonna just use a, a place filler. The leader of this EDC or the CDC, the, the leader of that organization still reports to a board, but is a member of city staff? Because in my mind, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure that out, because if the board has the hire and fire of the, the leader, then the city manager that they report to doesn't have any stick, right?
So a dotted line on the org
No, but the, the board of directors who employs the executive director has to hold the executive director accountable for their communication and collaboration with their counterparts at the city.
Let me talk for a minute about efficiency, uh, because I think that's, that's something that, uh
I was trying to get a question, I was trying to get an answer.
Well, I mean, the, the question is, hey, can it work this way?
Has he seen, has he seen a working example of that? That's what I'm asking. Before you go off on your dotted line or whatever, I just want to know, is there a working example?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Maybe Charlie's seen something, but I'm trying to imagine at, being a director that could be fired by a board and a city manager. It's like
No, you can't be fired by
No, 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 he's not saying he can be fired by any manager. He's just saying I said, he, he's saying, but be part of the staff.
Influenced without authority.
If you're city staff, by default, you report to the city manager ultimately.
That's, that's what I'm trying, that's what I'm struggling with.
Because I, I, I think from my standpoint, what I, what's frustrating about your example is this. I have never found, I've been, I don't even know how long you've been around here, but Amy, if I need to find out something, I just call her up. Like, it's, like, you know, it's like, hey, what's going on with this? Hey, give me a brief into what, what's, what's going on with the city, what are the issues, what's concerns, what do we need to know regarding economic development? It's always, it's been that way. I don't understand why it wasn't that way with Serena. Like, that just doesn't make sense to me that, like, hey, let's sit down, let's talk. And I kind of sworn they had meetings like once a week or something like that with each other on things, and so Oh, yeah, I forgot, agnostic staff. But, but this, this, I think a lot of that stuff, like what you're saying, first of all, teams, technology, and then, and then just talking to each other, it's kind of like
So if, if, if the system were working
Which it wasn't. We agree that there were glitches to the system. I think we all wholeheartedly agree with that. Except for Doug, he may not.
I mean, we just postponed, yeah, we just postponed it on for two weeks, demonstrably not working.
So
And, and so the question is, are, are you also suggesting what Doug's suggesting is that we, we just leave the system alone and bring in a new executive director and, and, and hope for the best? Or do you think we need to make structural changes?
So what I said, what I said was quite literally.
You could completely
It's amazing when somebody else puts words in your mouth.
I know. No, I'm laughing. I'm laughing because he's
Just because it's right a different way, doesn't mean it's gonna be better.
Like, what, what? But as I conveyed before, is that I, I feel like a lot of this is personally driven and it's relationship driven. And those things are going to reset by definition of people who are gonna be there for that. You're going to have a new staff, you're having a different leadership that are just going to come in and do that. And so I'm open to structure, structural changes, just not throwing out the whole kidding caboodle, um, giving it to the city manager right now until we see how that plays out from there. Like, and so that's why I was asking you about what changes would you like, and that liaison idea, it's an interesting idea. I just don't know how to implement it. I do think that's an interesting idea.
No, I, I agree with you, but I think a liaison, a designated point of contact might increase the efficiency of communication between the PCDC, uh, and the city staff. I, I think it is probably appropriate to have a designated point of contact on both, both sides. Hey, that doesn't mean you can't call, you know, planning and zoning if you didn't get the answer to the question that you asked. Uh, but, um, something like that, I think, might, uh, improve efficiency. But, uh, I think we can go too far in the pursuit of efficiency in government. If we had a, a, you know, single-party system, top to bottom, and, and everybody in the counties and the cities followed the order of the governor, that would be more efficient. But it wouldn't necessarily be better. I, I think it's appropriate that, that people who are closer to whatever the problem is have the ability to, uh, to, to bring their independent expertise to bear and make independent decisions. And we hire city managers for a lot of different reasons. We did not hire this city manager because of her expertise in economic development. That was not part of the portfolio, not part of the
You weren't there.
Hiring at the, on the front end, and
I'll let you know if we brought it up.
The, uh, certainly not part of the decisions to retain her, uh, because
She did no Ryan, that was really the key point, right?
Not part of, of the, of the portfolio. Um, and people who are economic development directors, generally speaking, uh, is my understanding, have a, a different skill set than city managers. Um, and I think that we need to, we need to give the board the, uh, the ability to hire someone who has that particular, uh, skill set. And let me say this. Um, the more autonomy people have, generally speaking, the, uh, the higher quality candidates you get. You know, I think we have a really high-quality, uh, city council, part of, partly because each one of us is autonomous. And the mayor, or the city manager, or the mayor pro tem might make suggestions, but all of us are free to ignore those. Uh, if we have to do exactly what the mayor says every day, we can do that, and that's more efficient. But I'm not sure that we get a better result in the end. And, and I want to preserve the ability of the PCDC board, which has many city council members on it, to make those decisions, uh, independently. And, and I want to preserve the independence, uh, of the, uh, of, of, of the director to go out and look for, um, economic development opportunities, and have that be the full-time job. The city manager's full-time job is never going to be economic development. Because the city manager has a lot of other things to do. The city manager has 400 people to oversee. I, I think it's unlikely that the city manager is gonna want to go to Toronto to an international economic development conference for two weeks.
We agree that this is a bad idea. The 601, I don't like at all. I don't, I don't think those roles overlap. I think they're separate and disjoint. I, but But sitting here thinking about it and 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 hearing what you're saying, I think a liaison is a bad idea. That introduces the thing we call the telephone game. Because instead of your executive director talking directly with the city manager, they now have someone taking messages back and forth, and that seems like a bad idea. I do think that in in considering this, I do think that you served on the PCDC board, most of us have.
All of us here.
I think all of us here have.
Literally.
So so is our only role to hire and fire the executive director? Or did we have more things to do than just that?
Well, I think there were a lot of things to do than just that, but I think the boards in the past were kept in the dark about a lot of things. And, you know, from my experience in watching board members over the last couple of years, that's what I saw until we appointed these gentlemen right over here. And then I began to see a change, which is really exciting for me because now we got people playing the game versus just rubber stamp.
Right. And so and so my question then leads to if we make the executive director an ACM that reports to the city manager and that's the the only duty we change from the board, the only duty that we transfer from the PCDC board is the hiring and firing of that individual. Does that put that person inside the city structure sufficiently, but still preserve the power of the PCDC board and fix these issues that we saw today? We just changed that one piece of the board function.
As long as you have a healthy relationship, yeah.
And and that's always that's always the caveat, regardless of which system we go with. Doug? He's voting no. He's thinking about it. No, I saw him think about it.
No, no, no. I mean, essentially, what you're recommending is exactly what six oh one says. Six oh one says that the general manager is the city manager and they hire someone to do the job.
Right.
And run the and and have ultimate authority over the organization.
And and I'm saying the general manager is whoever that executive director is, that's the ACM that.
That's effectively no different. Is the general manager the city manager who hires the executive director? Or is the general manager the executive director who reports to the city manager? Same thing. It's just just a change in title.
So let me ask you this, whoever knows the answer, let let me know. Was one of the previous the executive director's responsibilities was to meet with the city manager?
I I recall, didn't we specifically direct the city manager and the executive director to have lunch once a month?
I feel like we had that conversation when we when we used to have an office.
Sure, but we met often. I've never I don't know where the the questioning, the line of questioning is coming from because that has not been an issue.
That's never been an issue.
I think the issue isn't the meeting. I think.
It's the substance.
I think the issue is the substance and.
Okay, so then, okay, then Serena, you asked, you said that. So were they superfluous in nature or what?
I've I'd never have seen the contract that came before you today. I was not aware or made aware of deal points.
I'm sorry.
There are questions that I've had in the past about.
So so they were.
And they've been in the in the works for over a year and none of that can be.
So so they've been superfluous in natures, what you're telling me?
There are positive things that also come out of it, too.
Okay, well, because what I'm hearing is this, what I'm hearing from you is is that that's never been an issue, but then you're saying at the same time, you guys could have been playing tiddlywinks for all good and get out because you're not getting any, you know, anything concrete or substantive in those conversations.
Here would be my point.
Let me ask this question. Let me ask this question to Charlie. I can't remember five oh one, oh, five, seven, whatever it is, the executive, excuse me, Economic Development Negotiations executive session. City staff can participate in that with the PCDC board, correct?
It is my opinion that they can, yes.
Okay. And then my my expectation would be that the city manager isn't being briefed about economic development negotiations on any particular project over lunch or a separate meeting. They'd be briefed in executive session with the rest of the board. And if the board needs to ensure that staff is included in those discussions, then that's for us to tell the board to make sure that they include people in there.
That's true, but now I'll finally speak up because I really appreciate everything y'all say, but you know, Rudy already knows I'm going to say what I'm going to say. And I think far too many former and current board members of PCDC have put an emphasis on protecting PCDC and serving PCDC rather than serving the citizens of the city. I think they have drank the juice, the Kool-Aid of the former executive director and got punched drunk on it, and no matter what that person wanted was going to happen, whether it was good or bad. Whether that person wanted to communicate with the city staff or not, that person once told me personally that that person withheld information from that person's own board because of economic reasons. My fear is twofold. One, I think we do need to maintain on many levels the board as it is. I don't want to. It it's a tough one, and I agree with you on a lot of levels, Doug. At the same time, as one member of our community said, that if the board is not doing their job and they're following the executive director around and doing whatever that person says, it's our job to get rid of that board. And if we're not doing it, then we're not doing our job, and it's the citizens' job to get rid of us. So, you know, it rolls downhill. But the problem is, again, everybody kept drinking her Kool-Aid. That she was the greatest thing in the world and that she did everything perfect. And Rudy, you said every time you called, you got an answer. Did you get the answer you were looking for? Because I know when I would call, I'd get thirty minutes of dialogue and they'd hang up and I'd say, oh, she's the greatest thing and realize I didn't get my answer.
So I'd got the thirty minutes of dialogue, but I'd also redirect the conversation and get my answer. I mean, and I and I don't want to focus it on just, as you said, like the past and prison with that, but I do, but moving forward, I I I I agree that it shouldn't be, I mean, obviously, PCDC board should not be looking out for PCDC. It should be looking out for the interests of citizens. And I have I have faith in that, right? Like, working from that. Again, I'm just going to reiterate, I think that I like your idea. I just don't know how to execute.
Well, what I was going to suggest at the end of it is rather than that idea, maybe we make the assistant city manager, a assistant city manager that we choose, a non-voting member of the board of directors of PCDC, so that we can ensure that somebody with the city is always in those meetings, whether they're executive or not.
You know, we had that.
We'd be assigning them to to the function. There's no such thing as a non-voting member of the.
We can make. So so what we.
No, it's legislative by statute.
So 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 what we.
It's established by.
Yeah, what Doug said.
So so what we discussed.
We can we can assign an assistant city manager to sit.
That's what I was going to say. Remember what we said years ago? We said literally, let's look at having a staff member on that board.
That cannot be kicked out of meetings for any reason that.
No, I'm not. You're no, no, you're right.
Whether or not the attorney on that side says so.
But we can do that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, whether they sign an NDA or not, they cannot, they have to be in the meetings.
And that's what we we talked about this.
And they must be allowed to participate in the discussion.
Three years ago, four years ago, five, that's that's been something that's been brought up consistently about making someone from there. That's we actually had someone in mind when we were doing the revisions back in, I feel like this is pandemic time, like in 2020 or something like that. So I think that me, I like I like that idea. I like having somebody from staff being on the PCDC board. See how that works and then and then and then revisit in the conversation. You you bring up an interesting point, and I want to make sure I mark that it's, you know, June 25, 2024, where I agree with one of your analogies. I thought, because I thought your analogy, you know, regarding Governor Abbott, when that streamlined me makes sense. And also the steam that comes with this. Because, I mean, I'm not going to make any bones about it. I want the next Adriana Cruz to be running PCDC. That's what I want. I want that type of person, that personality, that interest, who has those kind of relationships to be here running PCDC. And I think we have an opportunity to do that, but we can't disregard what these folks are saying. And I and I think that something's got to get. And if we can't do his dotted line, then put somebody on staff on there so they're not kicked off of there. So I like how Jim's keeping his cool right there as well regarding, you know, we don't have things like happened again tonight.
So I feel like there's a there's a huge challenge with doing that because now we're asking staff to cast a vote on the PCDC.
Which happens with other boards. It happens in other cities. It does.
Generally, when it happens, it's because it's operated under a completely different structure. When when staff is appointed to type B organizations, it's typically because.
I don't know. I don't know if I agree with you on that.
In my experience.
And I'd like to get get them to do the research.
I mean, there are there are what, 600 EDCs in Texas? Yeah, there's there's plenty of different ways to do it. The ones I know.
Don't, 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 don't color. I can't. That is that is that is such a disingenuous comment. I know. That's such a disingenuous comment.
Saying that it exists is the disingenuous comment to to start with, Rudy. Saying that it exists is the.
No, 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 it's disingenuous.
I have specific experience with it operating that way. And in those specific experience, those organizations operate specifically to provide CIP funding for parks and recreation services.
We're saying is that.
Which is an appropriate way for staff to exert influence over that funding.
Other instances specifically that they have they have utilized before.
Name one.
That are complaining to, I'm saying, that I literally said, Serena, can you look at them and do it as well?
Exists. If you don't know that it exists, then all you want to do is have staff go on a wild goose chase to find it for you.
That's literally throwing that's literally throwing a conjecture to what the conversation is saying, hey, listen, but there's 600, so obviously I'm right on that. Come on.
There, there, no, I'm telling you about the ones that I know specifically. They are CIP funded.
And, okay.
They are CIP funded functionalities.
So so again, it doesn't mean that there's not anything out there for that.
There could be others where where staff is appointed to the board. I think it would be a huge disservice to our staff to force them to vote on PCDC items when they're serving with council members. Because that is going to certainly turn the tide of the vote. There is there is no good way. What happens when your assistant city manager votes against three council members?
So you're saying you're saying that you're saying you're putting.
Yeah, that's a funny scenario.
You're saying you're you're saying you're putting the staff, you're saying you're putting the staff in the in the wrong situation that's going to be negative.
A terrible position for the function that we have defined.
Well, that's why I said non-voting member, but if it's not legal, then I.
But that's.
This is the thing. No, we can. We can absolutely assign a staff member or direct our.
And you know, and I know what you're going to, go ahead.
To to.
Go ahead.
To assign as an assistant city manager to sit in every meeting and attend every executive session. And the only time they would potentially be kicked out is for personnel issues under executive session. Otherwise, they would be sitting in on every economic development negotiation. And I'm perfectly fine with that. Putting them as a voting member, terrible idea.
Quite literally out there. So I disagree with it being a terrible idea. I think that I think that I quite literally seeing how other cities have done and worked from there, I'm interested in seeing about that. I don't think it's a terrible idea. I do think that you bring up a point to say, hey, listen, how will that person feel if they're in a situation voted for that? But isn't that the problem in general? Is that when anyone from council or a group of council gets outvoted by there, that is an issue? I mean, that's an issue in general, saying, hey, listen, okay, this is the way that this is the way they look at it.
Saying we got too many council members?
No, this is what you're saying. You brought up that scenario. Them saying that's that's not that's not just specific to one scenario. That's specific to generally.
Maybe that's a structural change we need to make.
Well, let me address that because I do think that Doug has a point that it that a ACM would be different than an ordinary appointee. Because you really have to have a stop, not only do you have to have a spine of steel to to stand up to your council members when they're your boss's boss, but you you better be financially independent because, you know, it it that the stuff rolls downhill.
But that's quite literally, that's quite.
Hold on a second. They're different. Let me finish making my point. Let me finish making my point.
Conversation that we had.
Finish making my point.
We went to three. That's the same conversation.
The appointees who are on the board who are not city council members, who are not city staffers are all independent in the sense that if they disagree with the the council and the council says, well, you're you're no longer going to be on the board, they don't lose their job. They lose their part time volunteer gig that eats up a bunch of their week.
Oh, that's such a god.
If they if they get fired.
I can't even I can't even believe you said that with a straight face.
Look, if they get fired, you're in some sense of promotion. But if you are an ACM and you disagree with three city council members and then you you're fired as an indirect result of that. David, I don't think that would ever happen.
I just.
Why don't y'all, why don't y'all ask the city manager how she would feel appointing an assistant city manager to be in that type of role if it should happen?
Or we could appoint this city manager.
Understand that we just appointed, PCDC board just appointed an interim executive director that is a director that reports to its ACM.
Well, I don't know. Doug's telling us she, hey, may be in trouble.
Okay, guys, we're we're going way off the rail here. I I know. You know, we can discuss this all night long, but we got to land somewhere. Move to approve seventy.
You're not going to give a second.
No, motion dies for lack of a second? Okay. Well, I haven't said that. Move to approve. Now the motion dies for lack of a second.
So I would like to see if there is consensus. And I don't know if I can word this on the fly so that we can deal with it tonight or at least vote on it tonight.
I'm glad we're having this conversation. Good job.
But but I would like to reword six oh one so that and and leave executive director title in there that the executive director shall be an assistant city manager and report to the city manager and that all the other duties of board would 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 stay.
Absolutely not.
No.
No.
City manager doesn't agree. City manager doesn't like that.
I I'm sorry. Do you mean create a new position of an ACM?
So so that the executive director would become an ACM.
Yeah, I.
No?
I'll follow up. I, no. For many reasons, but under I do run the organization and I wouldn't dare have three ACMs and a deputy CM with one ACM with the role of one department. Well, my other ACMs have five, six, seven departments. No, that the economic development role in cities that are departments, this is, to be frank, a department of three. This is a very small piece of the city. And I would like to say that, yes, I do know how to run it, that I I have done economic development. And I would trust any of my assistant city managers to to manage a department of three, four, five people, regardless of what it is. I'm not a police chief and I think I do a fine job managing that. So to take a shot and say that it it has to be the certain level of a position is absolutely untrue. It's it's not an ACM position. It's not even close. It hasn't even come close to my ACMs.
What do you think about that, Doug?
I have no opinion.
That's a lie.
Okay, guys.
I just pulled you out, sir.
I really have no opinion.
Gentlemen, we need to come to a resolution on this.
Well, Serena just went Tupac, so.
I asked you to.
I am curious why there's a modification of seven oh two. I don't know if anyone has an explanation for seven for the change in seven oh two. I believe that was put there specifically to address concerns that that we've experienced in the past.
You're saying that you're saying that was struck out purposely for.
I I'm wondering why it was struck out because it was placed there purposefully in the past.
What was seven?
So.
Oh, in the past.
All board directors and employees of the corporation are prohibited from participating in personal financial transactions with the economic development prospects. Crossing out and employees.
I don't want to answer for James. I mean, he can, because he.
Can somebody answer that?
Because I think the I think it was based on the change in six oh one, there would no there would no longer be any employees of the corporation.
Okay, that makes sense.
And so if there's no more employees of the corporation, that would make sense.
James, ditto?
Yeah.
Because you're right.
So that's contingent upon six oh one.
Yes, yes, yes.
And that was a clause that we put specifically for a situation that arose.
Sorry about that, James.
Thank you, Charlie. That's helpful. Well, so I know we, we had previously documented a date. I think it was June 6th that we were closing applications for the position. I think we've since extended that. What is our current application deadline on the position?
It's not
No, we took it down.
No, remember we said we take it down till we figure it out what was going on with this.
We were taking it down.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's too much
We said, yeah.
No one's going to apply.
I, I knew at least two people who had applied.
I know some too. They're still in the system.
They're still
We have them.
Were they notified that the position was closed?
Yeah, this was, this was done in concert with our, with our recruiter. And he strongly advised that until it was settled, settled, like what they're walking into, it's, it's killing the applicant pool to not know what they're walking into. So we need, we need definitive structures so we can recruit effectively.
So somebody says that we're here to serve and make hard decisions. So is there anything that in here that anyone would want to change? Or do they agree to any of the changes in here?
Well, yeah, we said five oh
Five oh one.
Five oh one.
I think it was five oh, wasn't it?
Yeah, I don't
Wasn't it five oh nine?
Was it five oh something?
Five oh nine.
Five oh nine.
But we said, but we said with five oh nine that what we wanted to
Five oh nine and six oh one, I think.
We wanted
Jim had, didn't like six, six oh one.
The, the entire rest of the red lines are based on those
Those two.
Those items. I mean, I would say the entirety of the red lines are based on six oh one.
Six oh one, yes, but not five oh nine.
No, five oh nine is based on six oh one.
So request to add
Does it have to be?
Yeah. General manager
The, the only reason it's changing.
Besides having
The board of directors and the president can still be responsible for setting the agenda. So let's, let's try this. I motion I don't even know what item we're on anymore. 7D. I, I motion that we approve 7D with the reverting five oh nine to the original language. Does that work?
Yes.
Second.
I thought you weren't okay with six oh one.
He just wants us to
He's just moving.
He's just moved, yeah.
Would you dispense with it?
Well, okay, now we're in discussion. Cool. I'd like to discuss more. Hearing, hearing Serena's moment going Tupac. I, I think, I think brought clarity to it, right? Because she, because she's right. I don't know that, and, and we'll find out here in the interim with, with Terry leading, leading the organization. And, and as, as we said in, or as someone said keep the, keep the wheels on the car. I forget what the metaphor was. But I, I certainly believe that Terry's capable of doing a lot more than that. And so I, I think Serena's right. I don't think, you know, I was trying to elevate this position to a level of ACM just in terms of work structure and, and charts and, and giving it, giving it a little more heft, but to her point, it's not, right? It's not. I mean, look, look at what any of our ACMs or deputy city manager manage department wise. And, and it's so much more.
Rudy's got something. Go for it, Rudy.
Here, you want to take, here, take these off. Let's see it.
I, I think it's they're different roles, different ideas. And in a lot of ways, I feel like the executive director for an economic development board has a target on it that an ACM doesn't. And I think language matters. And, and I think that right now is an example of just how different and, you know, and honestly, high profile role that is from there. It just is. That doesn't dismiss what an ACM does. It also shouldn't dismiss what someone in this role is with that. And I think that when we're having these conversations, we're not otherwise with that, you know, it is a very different skill, it's a different skill set that we're going to be looking for, you know, in this position. And it is a very important position because it has made a discernible difference in our city for better, for better, many times, for worse sometimes. And so having that person in there right there as well, I think it's important to highlight just how important that is. That's not to just I think, I, I don't think we should be trying to dismiss one position by highlighting the, the roles and responsibilities of another. And I think that this conversation has shown that just like you said, we're about to find out how it is. Because I, I truly believe it's, it's a person that I, just based on the conversation, it's a personality thing. Now, let's see how this is because there is going to be a reset. How does this reset go? To Caesar's point, you know, you know, who, who do we have on here who's holding people accountable? And I think that we have the right, I think we have the right board. I think we do. I think that Doug brought up again, another point about what happens when people vote against, you know, what members of council feel about on that board? Because in all sincerity, this council has shown that. And I just disagree with your assessment that like, oh, well, they just lose a part-time job. No, these people take these jobs. I would love for you to tell Melody Ryan that she just lost a part-time job doing this right there. This is a their service, this aspect, this is a important part of what they're doing for a community.
I'm not saying that it's not a, a big deal to be on, on a board, but it's a lot different than losing your job.
I, I, I think that, I, I think that, again, what I'm saying is that these roles and the people that take these roles and responsibilities are not dissimilar from what we do, from these things right there as well. And it makes a dematerial difference when things happen with them as well. And that's why it makes such a big difference as to who we're picking on these boards. Isn't that what we did in December when we were like, okay, listen, we've got to make sure we have the right people on these boards because they truly make a difference in what we're doing from there. But I also, but also again, want to say thank you to Caesar because I, we would not have gotten here if we did not have the, what you, the mayor said, Victor said, no, we need to have the conversation. And then it's an hour talking and we're still back on first, you know, back on go, you know, on the monopoly board, but at least, I saw you smile. But, but at least now we can say, okay, we've had this conversation. Let's see what it looks like. And then if it needs to be revisited, we'll revisit it. And, you know, and we're losing daylight on who we're recruiting. So now let's get that back on the board and see what we
All right, we have a motion in a second. Call the question.
Thanks, Doug.
Could, could someone restate the motion?
Yeah, I think he said
Motion to approve item 7D with the exception of reverting paragraph five dot oh nine to its original verbiage.
Yeah, he was just getting a vote on the board.
Okay. There's a motion to approve the changes
Yeah.
placing the authority of PCDC under the city manager.
Correct.
Did you just robot repeat what this is?
Robot repeat.
There we go. All right. Now y'all got your direction. Thank you, gentlemen, for putting the, call the question.
Wait a minute. What was it?
Tide.
Tide
Change is enough.
All right.
Okay.
Now we get to see what happens.
Does that mean we, help me understand our next steps. Is, is the position going to be reopened?
Yep.
Now we can reopen.
Yep. And now we get to see if it's a personality driven or a structured driven.
Okay. Do we have any more items on the agenda?
No more items.
Three or four.
We're done.